I will call the November 4th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Douglas County Planning Commission to order. And in order to determine a quorum, I'll call the roll and if you could answer your name when I call it the, call your name, Kristy?
I, here.
Bryce?
Present.
Dave?
Here.
Mark? Mark, you might be muted. Thank you, Mark. Brian?
Here.
Maureen?
Here.
So we have all seven members of the Planning Commission, that's a quorum. And Bryce, if I could ask you to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bryce. We'll now begin with public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the Planning Commission and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting. Public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line, 775-783-6088. Once a public comment period has been opened. Once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and Planning Commission in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during each public comment period. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at 12 o'clock noon. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. So public comment can now begin at 1:02 PM. Colleen, do you have public comments to play?
Yes, I do. So far, I have three. I'll start with one now.
Hello, my name is Brian Fitzgerald, B-R-I-A-N-F-I-T-Z-G-E-R-A-L-D. I'm the president of the Carson Valley Arts Council. I want to emphasize something I've stated in previous public comment. Just because an arts and culture element was missing from prior versions of the master plan does not mean it is not the time to add it. Douglas County must take a more active role in leading the support for building arts and culture facilities, creating art districts and studio spaces, developing public art protocol, and especially promoting public funding and partnerships for the arts. Arts and culture have a direct tie to our economic development. And it is a natural fit to be a part of downtown revitalization efforts. The Planning Commission must take the first step to help articulate the contributions and opportunities for the arts in Douglas County. I ask you to recognize the influence of arts on the local economy. And let's legitimize the arts as an essential component of civic support, funding, and decision making. Today, I believe you will be reviewing Element Five, Public Facilities, Services, and Recreation. In regards to Policy 26, which states, "Develop and maintain facilities which support the cultural and performing arts interests of our residents and visitors." There should be the addition of action items which identify a supportive position for public funding in support of these facilities and the creation of a coalition that develops the necessary partnerships, establishing the solid foundation for advancement of the arts. So I suggest the following additional language for the economic, I'm sorry, for the Public Facilities, Services, and Recreation element. Action: Identify opportunities for public funding for the arts, which occurs through a fair and transparent process, supporting the delivery of services to a broad spectrum of the community. Action: Review past designs for arts complexes and feasibility studies for the development and design of a theater venue for the Carson Valley. Action: Work with the Carson Valley Arts Council in its efforts to repurpose the Copeland Lumber Building. Action: Facilitate the creation of a cultural commission, an advisory board to the county commissioners for matters relating to arts and culture for benefit of all residents and visitors. Action: Explore the creation of a coalition in inner-local agreements that develops the necessary partnerships with the towns, Main Street, Gardenville, the Carson Valley Arts Council, and others. And action: Form local partnerships with key cultural groups and organizations such as the Douglas County Historical Society and the Dangburg Home Ranch to collect, preserve, and promote an understanding of Douglas County's heritage. Thank you.
Comment number two coming up.
Ellie Waller, W-A-L-L-E-R. I agree wholeheartedly with comments provided by Jim Slade for today's Planning Commission consideration. I still do not understand why this plan is on a path for approval in 2020. If we do not capture the mistakes of the past, we will continue to repeat them. Lots have been exposed and ignored. The current 2011 version has redeemable content that has been shoved aside for a 2016 version that no one liked. I urge you do not forward a recommendation for approval at this time. Also, each meeting, I repeat, it is necessary to have a status of all action items, starting with the 2011 current master plan, be provided for comment. Why have we not received a new implementation chapter that starts with 2011, brings forward action items proposed in 2016? A status is necessary to understand if we are actually making forward progress with a master plan. Thank you.
Comment number three is next.
Jim Slade, I commend the Planning Commission for removing some of the inappropriate language from the proposed master plan update in your meetings of October 20 and 21. Specifically, Land Use Goal One, removing the goal of achieving balance between preservation and development. Management Goal One reverted to the previous version and removing the phrase that our businesses need to flourish. And GMH Goal Three, changing increased housing opportunities to increase awareness of affordable housing needs. All three phrases that were removed or replaced have never previously appeared in any version or draft update, and all were clearly pro-development statements, hence contrary to the often expressed public interest. That begs the question, who put these statements into this, this draft update? It was undoubtedly community development, one way or another. As usual, they have put their own pro-development bias in place of the public's desire for slow growth to keep our rural character. Some additional recommended changes. Land Use Policy L7 regarding urban service areas should be changed back to the version in our 1996 master plan. Quote, "All areas not urban are considered rural because there's adequate capacity within the defined urban service areas to accommodate almost all the residential growth that can occur within the limit of the groundwater resource and capital improvement capabilities to the county. There is no need to identify future urban, urban service areas," unquote. That is still the case. The county needs a revised build-out estimate before making any changes to that statement. Agricultural Goal Two, in the phrase "development that acknowledges and enhances agricultural areas," what does "acknowledges agricultural areas" mean? The only, the word "acknowledges" should be removed. The 2020 update should include the current 2011 language of Policy 1.5. Douglas County shall preserve a distinction between urban and rural areas to wreck new growth to areas already committed to an urban level of development and preserve rural industries, e.g. farming, livestock grazing, mining, natural resource protection, and open space recreation. That policy should be retained instead of the proposed wording in the latter part of Goal Two. Agricultural Policy A10, protect prime farmland by discouraging development patterns that harm this important resource. Most of the agricultural lands in Douglas County is ranchland rather than prime farmland, of which one could argue there's very little. Most of our ag land is used for raising cattle and growing hay and alfalfa. This policy, by seeming to differentiate between farmland and ranchland, would be another giveaway to developers. All agricultural land in Douglas County should discourage development patterns that harm this important resource. This policy should be changed to begin with protect agricultural land, or it should be removed. As it is, it's just another pro-development statement.
That's it so far.
Thank you, Colleen. I have now 110, so I believe we've exceeded the, the time for a public comment. I would want to remind members of the Planning Commission and members of the public, we did receive, I believe, six written public comments, and those are included in the supplemental materials that were distributed yesterday, and those are on the county website. So we do, as always, look at those very carefully before our meetings. So if there's no other public comment that has come in, Colleen, as of 110 then, opening public comment is closed. The county's public comment phone line will remain open to allow for closing public comment to be recorded as the meeting progresses. We'll now move to approval of agenda. We have the agenda before us, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Maureen moves approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Brian, I'll second.
Brian seconds the motion to approve the gentle. Before we take the vote, I would like to give a short explanation of how I suggest that we handle the process today. We accomplished a great deal in our last two meetings, and the materials in your packets on pages six through 57 document our previous actions. Today, we'll start with page 58, and we'll consider the unapproved goals, policies, and actions in Elements Five and Six. We'll follow the same process as we did the last meetings. We'll discuss each unapproved item, and then a motion and a vote. Then after we complete this work, we'll move to material starting on packet page 73, and we'll consider the text and the figures and the tables and the maps in the executive summary in Elements One, Two, and Five. For each of these items, as we did previously, we'll first vote to accept the draft presented to us for purposes of discussion and possible modification. I'll then open the item for review, and I'll recognize anyone for comments, questions, or motions if they would like to add, modify, or delete anything in the particular section. Now, much of the material simply reflects updates of text, tables, and maps of the 2011 or 2017 plan, and does not carry the weight of the Goals, Policies, and Actions portion of the element. Later on, when we have our meeting next week, we'll have a combined document that will include all of the text approved and all of the Goals, Policies, and Actions approved, so you can see them all in one particular document. So during the next week or so, staff will continue to scrub all the language for typos, spelling, formatting issues, and we'll authorize them to continue their work before giving us a final document later this month. So I'll now entertain any questions or suggestions on how we intend to proceed today before we approve the agenda. Are there questions, suggestions, comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will call the roll on approval of the agenda. Kristy?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Okay, on this vote, there are seven ayes and zero nays, so the agenda is approved. I will read the item into the record, and then we'll begin. For possible action, presentation and discussion on the final changes to the 2020 Douglas County Master Plan, which includes amending all existing chapters, creating a new structure of elements to include Executive Summary and County Profile, Land Use and Historic Preservation, Agriculture and Conservation, Growth Management in Housing, Economic Development, Public Facilities, Services, and Recreation, Public Safety. The remaining Goals, Policies, and Action Items held over from the October 21st meeting, 2020 meeting, shall be discussed and approved. Staff will present portions of the text of the draft master plan update, which incorporates the changes made during the special meetings held on October 20th and 21st, 2020. The Planning Commission will deliberate and approve text changes as necessary. Unfinished items will be carried over to the November 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. So with that, Sam, I believe we start on packet page 58, which is Element Five, Public Facilities, Services, and Recreation. And the language under Goals, I believe, was just incorrectly placed there, but Brian, you were the one that caught this. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add to that particular portion of the, of the element?
Um, no, I think Sam, let me just confirm my writing. I think he's got it exactly right here. Um, you know, we're just, we're looking at agriculture and the public facilities section in that sentence, and I didn't think that belonged, and that was the reason for the change that I suggested. Looks like he summed it up pretty dang good, so thanks, Sam.
Okay, other questions or comments on this before we move to a motion? Brian, would you like to move that this be corrected?
I move that the first sentence, or what would we call this, the first section under Goals, prior to Goal One, be amended to the new language that Sam has in front of us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, Maureen seconds the motion. Is there discussion? If not, I'll call the roll. This is on Brian's motion to correct the language under the Goals section. Kristy? Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so on this vote, there are seven ayes, no nos, and that language will be corrected. Uh, now I think it's Goal Three, and then we'll go to Goal Four. Sam and Brian and Maureen, I think you both had questions or comments on Goal Three. Would either of you like to go first?
Uh, I will, and may echo something that Brian's gonna say. I think that we should have something that clarifies, it's not just the cost of public services, but the ongoing cost of maintaining those services. It may be implied or understood, but it's so difficult to get anything funded here in this county that if we don't spell it out, it's going to be open to misinterpretation.
Thank you, Maureen. Brian, did you have to, other things that you wanted to raise, or you want to add on to what Maureen said?
Mine was more of a, just a structure of the sentence, you know, just the multiple ands I always have a problem with. So I was just moving that and require there, and just saying requiring that new development pay its equitable share. Um, mainly just facilitating that change, but I understand what Maureen's saying here. I just, I think Maureen's purpose maybe has achieved a little better through a policy or an action than maybe putting the definition of what paying for your services means here. So I only had that changed, it's only structural, so that's just my comments regarding Maureen's comments.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Maureen, did you want to try and throw up some language, or do you want to see if Sam Booth can put your thoughts into a, a little bit more precise? Or would you prefer to go the way Brian thought and move, maybe add something in the, the policies or the actions?
Yeah, it, it can be a policy, I think. And if Sam wants to throw together language, I'm perfectly content with that.
Well, we can hold off on getting the actual language until we get to the Policy section, and consider that at the end of the Policy section. If you'd like to add a new, new section under, under this, this element, add a Policy 32 or whatever.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Brian, did you want to remove some of the, the and languages, is what Sam's got up there on the screen, something that works better for you?
That was the exact, the exact change I had.
Okay. Everybody else satisfied with the language in Goal Three, or are there other comments? Bryce, go ahead.
My only comment is clarifying, what does it mean for development to pay its equitable share? Seems pretty broad to me. How, how would, how would we determine what that means, and I didn't see a policy that further clarified that.
Sam, do you want to take a, Sam Booth, do you want to take a crack at that? I, I know we've had a lot of different language at times about pays their fair share, and I think Bryce raises a good point. What's, what's fair, what's equitable? Uh, should it be over a one-year time period, or a five-year time period, or a 50-year time period? What's the general definition in the planning world of, of development paying its fair share?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Sam Booth. Bryce, that's a very tough question, and I think you're correct. It is a broadly worded statement, um, just intended to say that, um, uh, you know, essentially as a development, or if a development proposal comes forward, that we make sure that it's, it's paying its share of the cost for, for the facilities needed to serve it. But I think that, that gets reviewed on a case-by-case basis, um, depending on the impact of the development and, uh, public facilities that it may impact. How do you measure that? It, it's very tough. Obviously, there, there could be times where there's pushback from the developer. Um, of course, the county's gonna, gonna try at all times to get as much as we can for the developer to pay for that upfront. Um, but I think that's, you know, that's something that the Planning Commission and the board have to consider uh, on a development-by-development basis. This, this goal here is just saying that, look, we should, we should ensure that we're, we're acquiring these things. I don't know if Sam Taylor has any, any, uh, legal interpretation of, of what we could include here, if there's, if there's any other discussion or wording that we could have.
Sam Taylor, did you have a thought, or I know Brian wanted to jump in here?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor, on behalf of Douglas County DAs. Most of the requirements that are placed upon a developer in terms of costs are already set forth in codes or the NRS. So our code determines in large part what we can place on a developer in terms of a burden or cost and its impact on, you know, the surrounding community. So those, those items are, for the most part, covered whenever a developer undertakes, uh, you know, any sort of project. Um, other than that, on a case-by-case basis, as Sam noted, you know, there can be specific requirements put in place, you know, for like traffic facilities that come out of DPW. There can also be, you know, power and water and other facilities need to be put in place. Most of those, again, are covered under our code and included in, you know, the, the development code in its entirety.
Does that give you a good answer, Bryce, or Sam Booth, did you want to add a little bit more?
Yeah, just the only other thing I would add, Mr. Chair, and this is Sam Booth again, is, um, I think what it's trying to say with equitable share of the cost of public facilities is that there may be a time when a development is, is proposing, you know, to build in a location that uh, the county may need to, um, build infrastructure there anyway. Uh, it may have been a long-term plan for the county to build infrastructure in, in a certain location, uh, or there may be a deficiency that the county's trying to address. Um, well, I think what the equitable share is saying is that, that, that development is not required or shouldn't be held liable for, um, building those facilities for the county that were needed maybe for other off-site projects. Um, so it's their equitable share, so their impact on the facility, maybe it's a sewer line or a water line. Um, they should, uh, you know, for instance, install that line or install a larger sideline, uh, to serve their project, but I don't know necessarily that you, that the county can require them to install, you know, a line that's bigger than what would serve that project, just because it's the county's wishes to serve, you know, future development in other areas. And I, so I think that's the equitable share wording there.
Does that cover what you're looking for, Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I'm just not sure that it needs to be there. I, if it's already in code, I, I think it's just a, it's a broad goal, and I think goals, as I've mentioned before, should be measurable and attainable. And I don't know how you measure equitable share. As Sam Taylor mentioned, it's in the code. It, it's just a goal that I struggle with, the wording of it. I, I don't know how you can measure whether you've achieved it or not.
Thank you, Bryce. Brian, you want to go ahead and jump in here?
So when I'm looking at this, you know, and not to say, I basically mirror what Sam Taylor says, you know, I think back to the Rancho Sierra project. You know, you put 250 homes in the ranches who shouldn't have to pay for 100% of the improvements at Kimerling. Um, 12,000 homes already exist, so I think that's what it's pointing to in the equitable share, not saying that the developer then has to go and foot all the costs that Sam just mentioned. Um, I do think this is an appropriate goal in the sense that the code does achieve the goal. And I think, you know, when we're saying measurable, I think we're thinking too much of the actual monetary cost. I think the measurable I think the measurable is, do we require this when it's required? I think the measurement there is a hundred percent of the time that it's required, we use it, and anything less would be a failure of this goal. You know, I like goals where you can achieve it, and I think in this instance, if we're requiring people to pay for that intersection improvement, the extra water, the park, or whatever it may be, I think that's causing them to pay for their equitable share. You know, we can't just have everybody coming in, developing, and, you know, here's your fifty houses, and, you know, you deal with all the problems related to it. You know, no one likes that. I'd say that's something even anybody in the county would be behind.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments or suggestions on the language that we have now in goal three? Okay, Sam Booth, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, just to add, Mr. Chairman, that this was a 2016 master plan draft existing goal that through the audit was highlighted as one to keep. Then, of course, I could have started this element by saying that through the public survey, the goals listed here were put out to the public. I know some of the other elements that we discussed on the twentieth and the twenty-first, the public, you know, had mixed feelings about some of those goals. I think these received pretty good support through our public survey.
Thank you, Sam. Yeah, I think on this one, I wrote down it was seventy-eight in favor and eight percent opposed. Sam Taylor, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor again, for the record. Just one additional point to kind of follow up on what Sam was talking about relative to equitable. In the instance that a developer wishes to have, you know, off-site infrastructure put in place and have, you know, like Douglas County pay a proportional share of the increase in the size of a line, a water line and what have you, development agreement could be put in place to account for that. So there's already a mechanism as well in code that allows for those equitable situations to be addressed. So I decided to point that out.
Thank you, Sam. Any other members of the Planning Commission want to weigh in on goal three as revised? If not, Brian, would you care to make a motion to approve the revised language?
I move to approve the goal three revised language as it shows here.
Is there a second? Mark? Mark seconds the motion. Is there further debate? Seeing none, I'll call the roll on approval of goal three as revised. Christie?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so this vote is seven to zero, and the revision is approved. Goal four. Brian, did you have some comments or questions on goal four? Brian, I'm thinking you're on mute. I'm not sure if you're...
Yeah, got, yeah. You know, naturally, when I read this sentence as a county citizen, you know, I would say I'm concerned for the county acquiring water rights, but I would assume that that is not what is exactly meant by the statement. Therefore, I wanted to seek a little clarity maybe from Sam in a way to, you know, better word this, because I would understand it that, you know, development goes in, you know, that we are having them turn over the water rights to the county, not necessarily going out and buying, you know, water rights in an open market. You know, acquire to me says all possibilities, and an open market is one of those possibilities. So, you know, if we're not going to an open market, I think maybe rewording might be appropriate.
I kind of lost you, Brian, on where you were talking about acquiring...
That's not goal four.
Yeah, goal four...
Oh, goal four. I'm reading policy four. Hey, guys, sorry.
That's right, you jumped ahead.
Yeah, well, I have policy four right next to goal four, so sorry. You know, again, I was just looking at wording here. You know, I don't know if Sam has my wording, but I just had trouble reading it straight through and getting a clear understanding of what's said. You know, I think I believe my change came in through the connectivity part, saying that connectivity of trails, parks, open spaces, natural areas. And then I even put sensitive habitats, using sensitive in the S in parentheses, saying that, you know, habitat on its own may not be enough. You know, if we add sensitive habitats, naturally we're protecting, you know, sensitive habitats too, I would think, but saying it makes it a little stronger. And then just continuing with the final and recreational services. I do notice that we mentioned sensitive wild habitats other places in the code, and that's why I kind of brought it forward to this section to see what other people thought about adding that sensitive portion there. And I can't see, but maybe I removed an and there also or something.
Okay, I think that kind of sums up where you were heading there. Other comments or suggestions on revising this language? Bryce?
So I think the other thing, I think the other thing I have there, Sam, is removing the and between natural areas, just putting that as a common. Because we can preserve open spaces and natural areas, yes, but I think in the sense of the sentence, I think if we removed that and, I was a little more able to read it better, I think. And then S on the habitats, or maybe habitat sounds better, but parentheses S was actually what I had.
Okay, make habitats a plural...
Singular or plural, you know, plural if you need it, yes.
Put a parentheses around the S. Okay, while you're fixing that, Sam, Bryce, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern with this goal is what role does Douglas County play in preserving and enhancing U.S. Forest Service, BLM, and other public lands throughout the county? What are examples of that? Those are federal lands. What role and what is an example of Douglas County preserving and enhancing public lands owned by the federal government?
Thank you, Bryce. Sam Booth, do you want to take a stab at that one, or anybody else on staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Sam Booth. I think as far as to the enhance, what I would say is that's what it's describing at the second half of the sentence there, that you're enhancing those public lands by promoting a broad distribution of connectivity of trails, parks, open spaces. So locate parks adjacent to public lands that, you know, if somebody's recreating in a park, they can have a trailhead or access that gets them to those public lands. We've had a few developments where we've requested the developer install a trailhead, parking area, something like that, to give them access, to give the residents or just citizens of the county access to that public lands. And then I think just also in general, maybe as the preserving, what comes up quite often in a, maybe in a land division application, could also be a rezoning or something like that, is frequently we have public comment or citizens, neighbors, trying to ensure that that development doesn't close off access to existing public lands. So maybe that's the preserve there, is that you, the development doesn't fence or build a wall around the development, and maybe there used to be an access to that public lands there that's now closed off.
Thank you, Sam. I think we also could maybe use the word preserve in the context of, there's always lands bills moving through Congress and other actions that might be taken by other federal entities that we want to make sure that the county position is, we want to preserve the public lands where we can. So that'd be my additional comment, is why the preserve might be in there. This is probably, I think I didn't write this down, Sam, a carryover from the 2011 and/or 2017 drafts. But you raised good questions, Bryce. Did you want to follow up? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm still concerned with the language, because it's really, if you read it as written, it's broken up into two parts. The first part is to preserve and enhance U.S. Forest Service, BLM, and other public lands throughout the county, period. And promote a broad distribution and connectivity of trails, parks, open spaces, natural areas, sensitive habitats, and recreational resources. I just think a goal that says that the county is going to preserve and enhance federal land, to me, is a goal we can't achieve. And so if the intent is that the county will promote a broad distribution and connectivity of trails, parks, open spaces, natural areas, sensitive habitats, and recreational resources to adjacent U.S. Forest Service, BLM, and other public lands throughout the county, then I can get my head around it. But right now, it's, there are two goals within the one, and I don't believe the first one can be achieved.
Okay, thank you. Other people want to weigh in on this, or Sam, did you want to respond? Maureen, I know has her hand up, so whoever wants to go first, just jump in there, Maureen or Sam?
I agree with Brian, and I agree with Bryce, and I was just looking at the language. And I think what gets me is having all the words, the United States Forest Service Bureau of Land Management and other public lands. And what if it was just preserve and promote access to public lands throughout the county?
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
Can I second that move? Are you allowed to second at this point?
Brian, we're not allowed to second little tertiary suggestions, but if we can, Bryce, I think you make some good points. Work together and get some language that everybody agrees on. Then we could have something that people could propose. Other thoughts or suggestions? Sam Booth has written something out there. Preserve and enhance public lands throughout the county and promote a broad distribution and connectivity of trails, parks, open spaces, natural areas, sensitive habitats, and recreation resources.
But don't we have somewhere else about access to public lands through approved areas, trailheads, whatever? And we could just second it here, preserve and promote access or preserve and support access to public lands throughout the county. I don't think that enhancing is really, it's not our purview if it's under somebody else's jurisdiction. But if we want to promote the access or support the access, we could do that.
I'm not sure, Sam Booth, I thought I saw in another policy somewhere, maybe down the line or action, we talk about access to public lands, but maybe I'm mistaken.
No, we have something, and it's through approved trailheads, and I think it's in the conservation element.
It's in the, this, Brian, for the record, that's actually in the Sierra Tahoe region when we described the area, I believe it was, and it was one of the policies we had there, from what I can remember. My problem with the word access is we restrict us to just preserving and enhancing access, not the actual physical land. Yes, U.S. Forest Service owns land, yes, BLM owns land, but we do too. If we're only preserving the access, then the land, you know, there's no reason for us to have to preserve the land, which we're giving them access to. I think the just access is useless if the land's useless. So I think we need to preserve the land, and access comes along with that rather than the other way around.
Good points, Brian. So I think the language is fairly simple and fairly direct. Bryce, let me circle back to you. Is this getting more to what your concerns were and allays those? Or were there other modifications that you might suggest?
No, this gets us much closer. I think this is something that can be easier to achieve. It leaves it a little more broad, because to Brian's point, the county does own land. So, and I like the fact that Maureen took those out, because I don't think Douglas County can preserve and enhance federal land. So I'm good with where we are with it now.
Okay. Other comments or suggestions on the revised language in goal four? Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table then, if somebody would like to make that, and then we'll see how...
Brian, here a motion to approve goal four as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Thank you very much, both of you, for improving that. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the roll on revised goal four. Christie?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so on this, there's seven votes aye, no votes nay, and goal four as a modified will be approved. And now, Brian, we can jump down to policy four, where you were starting to talk about acquiring water rights, and gonna ask a question, I think, on policy four?
Yeah, I guess just my biggest problem is, Sam, when we say acquire, can we define that better to not sound like, you know, Douglas County's in an open market purchasing groundwater? Or do we do that? I mean, Sam Taylor?
Sam Bryce, did you want, Sam Booth, did you want to start out?
Mr. Chair, I defer to Sam Taylor or our community development director, Tom.
Okay. Sam Taylor or Tom Delair, you want to take a crack at answering Brian's question?
Sam Taylor, for the record, the county has purchased water rights. Are you talking about just in general when it purchases water rights or for specific projects?
Well, I mean, as a resident, you know, naturally, if the county owns all the water, who do we have to go to to get it? You know, something that always concerns me, you know, a natural monopolistic over any sort of resource creates problems for anyone involved. So, you know, if it's a policy of the county to acquire groundwater and service water rights when they're available, you know, the county then becomes an immediate purchaser. If people become, you know, keep coming out and the county keeps purchasing, the rest of us could end up, you know, just going to them for their water. So, you know, always a concentration when it's available. And such as something like this, I'd be a little weary to saying that, you know, the county is actually going out and acquiring this, though it sounds like we actually do. You know, I was thinking this is more related to the development that comes in, and we've got twelve acre feet of water on the development, and now that goes to the county in order to, you know, put it into the water. Is that more what the intent is? Or is it more of to facilitate the purchasing of water rights outside of that type of transaction?
First of all, if I may, I think what's happening is like towns like Minden, you know, and entities that operate water systems are the ones who are actually acquiring the water rights so that they can pump water and, you know, distribute it to its customers. So it's not necessarily the county entity per se that's doing that, but it's sub-entities of the county that are engaged in that process.
I'd consider a sub-entity the same as the other entity. Maybe control's not completely there, but the illusion of control's always something we have. But, you know, I still find, you know, just a problem with the statement on its own. You know, it's, maybe it's something that maybe no one else feels. You know, maybe I'm alone on this one, but, you know, I'm just thinking that, you know, the acquiring of water rights as a policy, I mean, I think needs to be more related to, you know, when the development is occurring, you know, the water being turned over, not necessarily, you know, acquired. You know, I just, I don't know why it's I have the problem with that word. Maybe it's the way it's used in accounting.
Kirk?
Maureen?
Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding in the NRS that the value of the land is one resource and the value of the water is another. So if land is sitting there, someone can sell off the water rights from the land, and then we end up with just a dry patch. And I think the intent of this policy is so that we keep the water in Douglas County as opposed to it being sold off and shipped out of our area, like to Carson, Dayton, Fallon, and other areas that are being stricken with drought and overdevelopment. Mark, is that correct?
Yes, so the land is one property right. The water is, the water rights are another property right. They can be bifurcated and sold. Douglas County is actively selling water. They buy it from the town of Minden, and that's my understanding. Tom Delair can correct me, but they buy it from the town of Minden and sell it to Carson, and Carson then in turn can sell it downriver if they choose. So it's the county that's selling water rights out of Carson Valley.
That is my understanding as well, Mark. But Public Works does require a development if it was to come in to either provide the water rights... either provide the water rights for their project or they can pay the water rights or however many water rights they need from Douglas County, they can pay Douglas County to obtain those water rights as well. So, so Douglas County Public Works Department would acquire groundwater rights for that. Also, if there is a need for surface water in order to maintain, uh, those rights here in a valley, um, you know, the towns have acquired surface water rights over the years. Uh, I believe the county owns service water rights as well, um, out of the Carson River, you know, and, and so they, they do acquire both, both types of rights.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, uh, Mark. Uh, thank you for, uh, interjecting there, Maureen. Uh, Brian, uh, I'll come back to you. Uh, are you still troubled by the language or is it seem acceptable now with that explain, those explanations?
Well, I think Mark's explanation actually made me a little more weary. I mean, if the county can acquire more water and sell it to somewhere else, why would we want them to do that ever? Um, as a citizen, I mean, all of us are not happy with our water leaving here to Carson City and if we start sending it to Silver City or whatever up that way, I mean, it's only gonna, you know, tap our groundwater worse. Um, and when the county does it, you know, yes, it is through voter approval and things like that, but as we all know, who shows up at these meetings is very sparse. Um, things can happen without the knowledge of the public, even if it's not intended to do so. Um, any instance where the county has that ability and it sounds like we're selling them to Carson City, they could increase that landhold, increase the profit of what's going up that direction. It's not something I'm in favor of, um, not going to vote for this one, I think, as, as it stands. I mean, maybe if it was, uh, you know, acquire groundwater and service rights when such, when development requires service rights be turned over to the county, you know, I'd say that's something more, you know, amicable to me, you know, I just think we're leaving this way too open for, you know, just any sort of interpretation, all interpretation. And I hate to say that I am not ever in favor of government owning everything, um, period. So, um, it's not something that I can, you know, sit well with being a policy of our county. So, um, I, I don't think I'm ever going to come to an agreement on this one. So if you guys want to move on without me, go for it.
Well, one of my concerns about it is if we don't, the only way that we can actually tie the water to the land is through a conservation easement. And we don't know if we're ever going to get a conservation program that will tie the water to the land. So anything we can do to keep the water as best we can in the Carson Valley is okay with me.
Thank you, Maureen. Bryce, did you want to interject?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, like Brian, I too have some concern with this because I don't understand the intent and I haven't heard a good reason for it from staff as to what the intent of this policy is. And we have a policy like this, it, it suggests that the county is going to actively seek out and acquire groundwater and surface water rights wherever they're available. Um, which to Maureen's point, I'm okay with if it's being done appropriately, but this is very broad and I don't understand it. And, and much like Brian, I would be concerned about continuing to seek out and acquire these water rights and then selling them somewhere else. So I don't know what the intent is here.
Thank you, Bryce. Um, anybody on staff want to take a crack at that? I guess my, my general comment would be that, uh, uh, better for Douglas County to acquire groundwater and surface water rights than let it get sold to somebody else, uh, where we have less control over, over, uh, over where it might go and what we might do with it. But that's just kind of a layman's observation. So I would defer to any of you that might have a little more expertise or want to weigh in.
Well, it's my understanding that we have outside purveyors coming to Douglas County with an open checkbook trying to buy water rights. And that is a great concern. It's not for development in our area, it's for shipping out of the valley and shipping out of the Carson River area.
Thank you.
Whenever the policy, I don't believe it's ever the policy of the government to step into a free market in order to control it in that manner. I mean, you know, if we're competing with these people from out of state, it's only going to make it expensive for the county because they probably have a lot more money to throw at this than us. And we end up losing anyways, even though we have this policy. I mean, the broad policy is the reason I just can't vote for it because it really can be read by anybody and even though the seven of us here read it the way we read it, we think there's no malintent. But the next seven, the next five board of county commissioners, who knows what the heck they think? And if we leave it open and don't close that door now, we've left it open forever, I think. And I think that'd be a huge mistake.
Thank you, Brian. Bryce, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm, I'm not opposed to the policy, I just don't understand the intent. I do agree that it's much better for the water to stay here, but I'm, I'm hearing we're getting rid of the water that we're acquiring anyways, so, which I was not aware of. And, and so I'm not understanding, um, the intent here. If it's such a big deal, why are we giving away what we're acquiring anyways or selling it, but it's still going somewhere else?
Thank you, Bryce. Anybody want to respond to Bryce's, uh, question or query? I think Bryce, maybe you can, you can, you can follow this, follow up on this because I think those are good points and, uh, maybe the staff could give you a little more clarification if they get some, uh, some other experts to, uh, to add into the conversation.
I think we need to put something into the, uh, master plan prohibiting, uh, transferring any water rights outside of the basin.
Okay, Dave, thank, thank you for that suggestions. Do we have other debate on this, uh, uh, policy? I would, I would suggest then that we go ahead and, uh, and have a motion to, uh, approve it or disapprove it as the, as is the will of the planning commission and then go ahead and, uh, uh, debate further or bring it to a close.
I'd kind of like to hear what motion David could come up with.
I would say we, uh, prohibit, uh, the transfer of any water rights outside of, uh, groundwater basins in Douglas County, whether it's Carson Valley or, uh, Walker River or any such transfers. I think we have a definite problem in, in Carson Valley and until we do something, uh, to prohibit the transfer of water rights or, uh, not sure what, how to put it.
Well, I would, I would ask the staff, can, can we prohibit transfer of water rights of water that we don't own, we don't, uh, have? Uh, Sam, Sam Taylor, you're shaking your head no, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, Sam Taylor, again, Douglas County DAs, um, I do not believe such a policy would be lawful on its face. Um, I think, uh, people have the right to sell water. I mean, that was Brian's point before, the private entities have the authority to sell water rights to whomever they wish to. And I'm not sure that Douglas County on its own could prohibit the sale or transfer of such rights.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Um, Maureen, you and, you and Dave, uh, make good points and I, I think, uh, we should be willing to entertain, uh, language if, uh, if either of you want to draft some language up at some point and, uh, have that available. Um, but again, I, I think the best course of action now is to, to deal with policy four as written, vote it up or down, and then, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. Brian, do you want to interject?
My question was, did we not have an option three where we can direct staff to fix this and discuss it at a later point or do we have to approve or deny now? Um, because I just think the language is going to change based off what I hear and I think if we have a change, it'd be easier to vote yes or no than what we're looking at here, that it seems like even the people that agree with it can't agree with the way it's written. Um, you know, I'd be more in favor of having staff just come back with something better rather than, uh, you know, do this, but maybe we have to vote it down to do so. Maybe Sam can let us know.
No, we always have the option to, uh, to defer on something like this, uh, and come back to it the next time around. I, I would prefer not to defer on too many items because, uh, the more we, uh, defer, the more we're going to get bogged down in our November 10th meeting or November 17th meeting. But if there is a request to, uh, have the staff, uh, do additional research or come up with additional options, I think that's, uh, that's always one way to, uh, to skin the cat, uh, without having to, uh, force people into a yes or no vote. Uh, so.
I agree with Brian.
Thank you, Maureen. Um, is the, is the sentiment of the other members then to, uh, to take action on this one now or, uh, uh, we can, uh, just have a motion to direct staff to, uh, uh, make modifications to, uh, policy four or present additional options, uh, uh, with the issues, uh, uh, addressed in, uh, policy four? Um, we, we can go either way depending on what, uh, everybody else on the planning commission wants to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Bryce, go ahead.
Uh, as, as Brian mentioned, I'm, I'm not opposed to a policy of the county acquiring groundwater and surface water rights, but if I'm going to be asked to vote on this today based on what it's written and the inability for anybody on staff to tell me today what the intent is, then I'm not going to vote for it. So I would prefer not to be put in that position where I would prefer that it get fixed so it's, it's clear what the intent is so that we can, so I personally can vote for it because I believe that we should just not, without understanding what the intent is.
Thank you, Bryce. Very good points. Anybody else, uh, commenting on, uh, what we should do on policy four? Sam Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, the Sam Taylor again for the record. Uh, it might be helpful to understand what the underlying intent was for its inclusion in the first place. Maybe Sam Booth could provide an explanation or maybe Tom? Because I, I, I have to admit, I don't understand why it was included either.
Any perspective, Tom or Sam? Uh, um, Mark, you may have, uh, uh, done something on this in the, in the distant past too. Whoever wants to weigh in?
I'm, I'm trying to find out where this was coming from in the two, if it was coming from the 2011, uh, master plan. I'm having a difficult time finding it. Yeah, Tom, I can, I can tell you that this is a new policy that was added. Uh, this was not in the 2011 or 2016. Um, I can't, uh, as far as where this, this, the description for this policy or the wording exactly here, um, I can't give you a background on that. Um, water rights are not quite my expertise. Um, but, uh, you know, I hear the points from the planning commission and I think if there's any trepidation about, uh, this policy that i- if you remove it now, it doesn't mean that we can't add a policy back in, uh, in a, in a future meeting, um, somewhat related, uh, to this item if we need to. And, and just the, the only other thing that I might say is that, uh, I think some of our conversation about groundwater rights or, or, uh, prohibiting, um, ground transfers or, um, but even maybe even that can be extended to just flat stating acquiring, um, rights, you know, is that, is that within the purview of a master plan? Uh, or is that something that needs to be approved in an ordinance by the commissioners, uh, and adopted into code? And I, and I tend to think that that's maybe where it belongs.
Thank you, Sam. Those are very good points. Um, I, I think then, uh, the, the best way we might proceed is to, to, uh, vote on, uh, removing policy four and then at the same time, if somebody wants to incorporate it in their motion, uh, directing the staff to, uh, examine the issues raised in this policy and that members of the planning commission, uh, have expressed and recommend at a future meeting, uh, an additional policy that might, um, achieve what, uh, goals, uh, are represented by this. Uh, that way we remove the language, we've given the staff direction to, uh, to come up with something that might be better or more logical or meet the, uh, the points that members of the planning commission have made. And then we can take an up or down vote on that, uh, new language, uh, at our, uh, November 10th meeting. So that's just my thought, uh, but I'd be happy to, uh, entertain a motion. Brian, I saw your hand up first and then Bryce.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion, but I would just say, you know, that if, you know, once we make the motion in the second, that we all just add through our comments, anything we would like to see in this, you know, to give Sam and them some ideas, maybe he can jot those down and see how they can throw what we can throw at him into, uh, some sort of logical policy that, you know, I do appreciate Sam's final answer there that, you know, it sounds more action related. So I think he's kind of got a direction. I think he's smart enough to get it done with what we can provide it. So I move that we approve or remove policy four from this element.
Okay, Brian has made a motion to, uh, delete policy four. Is there a second? Maureen seconds the motion. Uh, Bryce, I saw your hand up before. Did you have a discussion or wanted to raise anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I believe that policy four is written is an act, is actually an action item and so I'll be supporting the removal of it because I think that the policy five discussing an inner jurisdictional approach to protecting critical aquifer recharge areas is an actual policy and acquiring groundwater and surface water rights may be part of what is necessary to protect critical aquifer recharge areas.
Thank you, Bryce. So Brian's made the motion and, uh, Maureen has seconded to, uh, delete policy four. Brian, did you have comments?
So my only comment was when, you know, I started this, you know, my whole problem was with the word acquire. Um, you know, I think a policy that would be better is to preserve groundwater and surface water rights within Douglas County. Um, you know, if we're looking to preserve those water rights within the county, somebody trying to move it out where we do have the ability to prevent us from doing so, I think this policy speaks to the actions that we would prevent that person from doing so if the power is there. Um, obviously in an open market, a private sale and the power's not there, we won't be able to do anything about that. Um, but I do look more to the preservation of these water rights rather than, you know, the acquisition by the county. So, um, I appreciate others for.
Thank you, Brian. Other comments on Brian's motion to delete policy four?
No, I, I think he said it all.
Thank you, Maureen. Uh, no further discussion, then I'll, uh, call the roll on, uh, deleting policy four. Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So on this, uh, uh, motion, the vote is seven zero and that will be deleted. I think we can move now to, uh, policy, uh, eight. Um, Brian, you had some thoughts on that and, uh, uh, before you go ahead, Brian, I would just want to call everybody's attention. We did, uh, add a, uh, uh, action item to the, uh, economic development section dealing with broadband. So I'm not sure, uh, Brian, whether that addresses your, uh, your thoughts on, uh, policy number eight, but that was added at our, uh, previous meeting.
So I think, uh, I think exactly what you're saying there, Kirk, is we have addressed that other one. So maybe Sam, if you can, you know, be ready to have that. But what I was looking at here is, you know, why the limitation throughout of public facilities? Um, is that because we want to have this available, available at all our community centers, all of those places? Is that what we're speaking to here? Because I think, you know, that makes this one a little more specific and I think the two in conjunction can work together if that's the goal that we're trying to achieve here. But I was thinking, why are we promote, why aren't we just promoting broadband connections and high-speed internet access everywhere throughout the county, um, not just within public facilities? So maybe Sam can speak to the point of maybe they're trying to promote the community center and all those piece, places be, you know, free connectivity for people or some sort of, you know, that? Or are we really talking about just promoting it through, you know, just public facilities and not just everywhere?
Thank you, Brian. Sam Booth, did you want to go ahead and comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Sam Booth. Um, I think, Brian, I, I think that was the intention, um, that, that this policy was speaking more to, uh, public facilities as it says, but government buildings, the community center, uh, things like that, that there's, um, uh, good, good connection, high-speed access, um, to promote those, those services in those buildings. Um, appreciate the point about, you know, uh, access throughout the county, um, and, uh, and Kirk's point too, that we had the addition of that other item, uh, I believe in economic development.
Yes, I believe, I, I mean, perfect, Sam. I think that answers it exactly. You know, I think, you know, because we made the other change, it made this question really not necessary. I just wanted to make sure that we're getting out there, that we really want these government buildings, people where places, people can have that connectivity. You know, the people that say that I can't go to the internet to watch this meeting, hey, I mean, that'll give them plenty of places to go watch this meeting. So, uh, you know, I think that's something that we should desire is to give everybody the access to, you know, promote education and whatever they may use through that internet access, not always good.
Thank you, Brian.
So I'd move that we approve policy eight as stands.
Is there a second? Bryce, uh, seconds Brian motion to approve, uh, Bryce, uh, seconds Brian motion to approve, uh, policy eight. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Uh, Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So there's seven votes aye, no votes nay, and that, uh, policy is approved. Uh, policy nine, uh, Maureen, would you like to make, uh, comments or ask questions on this?
Yeah, well, I have, I have a comment more than anything. Twenty years ago, expanding recycling efforts was a big deal and there was a tremendous market for recycled goods. And there was the ability to recycle a lot of products. That market has fallen away and there are very few things that actually get recycled and reused. Glass, metal, cardboard and paper. But as far as plastics go, there is no market. And I don't know if we should add language in this policy that is more definitive of what we are trying to recycle. Recycling yard waste is excellent because if we can divert that and create a compost facility, it will go well with the ag facilities and, uh, areas where in their yards where they can use this stuff. But I think to have an open, non-specific recycling effort called out in the master plan is not going to be serving the county as a whole. Cause if there's no market, where's it going to go? It's just going to be stored out at the, um, I don't know, diversion facility or whatever it's called out in the county. So I don't know, I'd like to hear others' thoughts about it.
Thank you, Maureen. Um, comments from the planning commission or, uh, uh, Tom, did I see you have your hand up or want to interject?
Yeah, if there isn't any other comments from the planning commission, I can try and just provide an explanation. This is Tom Delair for the record. Um, Maureen, this, the towns and the county actually have, you know, the DDI, um, for the county has a recycling program and the towns do, uh, separate collection for green waste. And, and all of those tonnages get tracked and recorded today, um, and, and sent to the state for recording. And you can see the Douglas County records in the text portion that, that we do, do achieve quite a large volume of, of, uh, recycling. And, and I think this is, this was put in here just in case we did find a mechanism for, uh, funding opportunity where, uh, if there was a, a, like they call it a dirty merf, this is how, um, the South Lake Tahoe Refuge, Refuge, uh, company actually diverts all the recycling in California, which is mandated by the state, um, to divert the recycling and, um, and, and the dirty merf would, would have that as just your, you were sorting your actual garbage. You don't, there isn't, you don't actually sort it at your house. Um, you would just, they would just take it and it gets recycled. Uh, so South Lake Tahoe, um, the, the portion that they is served in Douglas County is currently doing that, uh, to date. Uh, the, the recycling effort, uh, two or three years ago, uh, that the towns did and, uh, along with, um, DDI with, I think, I, I can't remember if it was about a hundred and ninety, I want to say a hundred and ninety customers, uh, tried a recycling program where it was, um, where you had your garbage in one can and, and your recyclables in another, and they picked it up every other week. And, and there was a program that was, was tried, uh, at the request of the county commission. And, and, uh, I think this is just to, to see if we can expand that effort in the future. Um, it probably won't be expanded until there's a mandate from the state. Uh, I know there were some discussions with Carson City to have a dirty merf system put in up there. Um, but since then, I think, um, well, it's a waste management took over their service area and, and they take all of their, um, their recycling to Reno. Uh, and there is a program up in Reno already, um, that, that utilizes the recycling materials and the plastics that you're talking about and actually is supposed to be converting it, um, into jet fuel. And, and so I know that's in the works and they still have to build a facility, but that's, that's where it was heading.
Well, I understand that and I know that there is a market for some things to be recycled. But as far as plastics, I don't think we should be encouraging the recycling of plastics because basically it's just standing up in the dump. Doesn't matter if it's Douglas County dump or out in Washoe County or somewhere else. It's, it's not being recycled into new product. But I do believe that yard waste and construction waste, whether it's bricks or mortar or even tires being turned into road base with concrete, those are good programs, but I just, I'm not comfortable having an open-ended program like this that is, doesn't specifically say anything. It's just expand recycling efforts, period. And I, I don't know, you guys can move on with it if you like it, but I can't support it as written.
Thank you, Maureen. Other comments from members of the planning commission? Bryce?
Mr. Chairman, I'd mo- move to accept policy number nine as written based upon the explanation from Mr. Delair.
Thank you, Bryce. Is there a second? Brian?
Brian, I'll second.
Brian seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Maureen, I think you raised some very important points. Uh, I did see this flagged in the, uh, public comments numerous times. So I think there is an interest in, uh, in recycling, uh, uh, whether there's a, a market for recycling of certain things, uh, uh, in certain cases. I, I think you make a very valid point there. Um, uh, I think there's always a market, whether it's a profitable market or not, uh, that, uh, that sometimes is a, is a big question as well. Um, but I think, uh, in recognition of a, of the number of public comments, uh, that I saw on this, uh, for the need to expand recycling, I think I would be in favor of, uh, continuing with this policy, but I, I do see your, uh, the points that you make and I think they're very valid ones. Other comments before we move to, uh, calling the question? Brian?
So my only other comment is I'm here, you know, the, you know, yes, recycling on certain items is down, but you know, that doesn't just mean that it's dead. Um, you know, new policies in California, you see food waste being recycled into compost. You know, there's all sorts of recycling that's going on that maybe is not being sold off at a profit, but being utilized for very good, good uses. So, you know, I do like that this is really just saying that we're going to seek to expand, um, not committing us to expanding. We're going to see what all those options look like and then we'll be able to make the, you know, informed decision, I think. And I like this policy because of that.
Thank you, Brian. Other debate, uh, before I call for the vote? Okay. Seeing none, this is on approval of, uh, policy nine. Uh, Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Uh, Dave?
Hi.
Maureen? I mean, excuse me, Mark. Mark, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Mark? Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye. So on this, there's, uh, six votes aye, one vote nay, and the, uh, policy is approved. Uh, now I'm not sure on policy 12, uh, whether that was, uh, identified, uh, by in somebody to, uh, uh, have discussion, Sam Booth, or whether we're going to 13 now?
Well, that was me. I just wanted.
Okay, 12.
I just wanted, uh, a clarification of what service deliveries we were talking about.
Sam Booth, do you want to give a quick, uh, explanation?
Yeah. So I think this was, um, I don't have my notes right in front of me, but I think this was a suggested goal or policy, excuse me, from the, um, consultants after they reviewed the, uh, existing policies and the suggestions from the survey and audit. Um, and essentially this was combining several, several other policies we had. Um, and so to Maureen's question, it's, it's all service, services that, um, are provided in the county, uh, or by the county. So, you know, as Tom spoke about, the towns provide trash services, um, or, or town of Gardenville provides trash services. Uh, you know, we've got water service, um, sewer service, uh, you know, and then, uh, in, anything else, uh, that's a service that's provided by, um, Douglas County, uh, or the towns or other entities. Um, so identifying those barriers and developing strategies to meet service delivery goals.
Thank you, Sam. Maureen, does that cover what your, uh, uh, look, information you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to move approval of that, uh, policy then?
If there's no comment from other planning commissioners, I'll move adoption of policy 12 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Bryce seconds the, uh, motion to approve policy 12. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So there's seven votes aye, no votes, uh, nay, and that policy is approved. Uh, now we'll move to policy 13. Um, Brian and I both flagged this one. I flagged it initially, uh, just, uh, on the question of, uh, how much expansion do we need for public buildings and how much, uh, increased demand is there for government services? And I think, uh, after further review, this is a recommended policy by the county manager's office. Um, I think, uh, it is wise to always analyze and evaluate and plan. Um, it doesn't commit us to expansion of public, uh, buildings or facilities. Uh, um, we always have to be looking to, uh, to, for the county to meet the demand for government services. Uh, so I think I'm generally comfortable with this policy, but I would yield to, uh, to Brian for, uh, his questions or comments.
So my comment was just that, you know, this should be something in the asset management plan of the county, not something within the master plan, you know, talking about our land uses and things like that. Um, you know, I do understand it does say analyze, evaluate, plan. But again, any good entity has a proper asset management plan, you know, plans for the increase possibly and the maintenance of their facility. Um, putting that down in the policy here, I don't think it does anything, um, doesn't achieve anything. And it's something that we should be doing anyways. And why do we have to say something we should be doing anyways? So I was, I was in favor of removing this just under the fact that if you go to different governments, there is a required five-year CIP plan. And the CIP plan is not always limited to just the five years and their foresight is usually beyond that. And therefore I just don't think we have to tell people to do what they naturally should be doing, but maybe we really do, um, is the other thought. So, um, you know, maybe, uh, I can guess other people's comment as to whether we need to tell them to do their job.
Thank you very much, Brian. Uh, Sam Booth, did you want to throw anything else out there or other planning commissioners, uh, want to, uh, offer some suggestions or Tom, uh, Tom Delair? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. Um, that's Tom Delair for the record. I, I agree, Brian a hundred percent. Um, there is, uh, there is though, the, uh, the evaluation portion of this where we would need to, you know, locate the, you know, locate a new facility. Where would those, where would those be located? What kind of expansive of services that would need to be required? And, um, you know, and those, I think that's what this is kind of pointing towards. And if it's in our master plan, uh, it would easy, it would be easier to get, uh, grant funding, uh, associated with those kinds of, um, strategies or plans that could be created. So I think that's why it was included in here. And I, and I believe there's some conversation, uh, about expanding the JLEC facility, uh, also having a, a county, um, uh, common complex area someplace, you know, that they would develop and, and having those kinds of plans analyzed. I, I don't think it's just on capital improvements, which according, you know, to county today is mainly just, you know, streets and improvements to your buildings like you were talking about, uh, those kinds of things. But it's actually forward planning, which really hasn't been done in the past.
Thank you, Tom. Mark, did I see your hand up?
Uh, no.
Okay. Brian, did that kind of answer your questions or did you have any other further, further thoughts on this?
So, so one thing you said there that I caught was, uh, granting would be easier with this in the master plan. Is that really true? Or we would gain points or something by having it here as opposed to just doing it anyways? Um, you know, I just don't foresee how that really helps, um, you know, in that sense. Uh, maybe it does. You can fill me in there. Uh, but again, expansion of government, you know, if you haven't got my tongue over this entire master plan, I'm never for it. Um, so anytime I see it in this plan, it's , uh, something I'm going to flag every single time. So, you know, being that you guys are on the inside and you guys always, you know, have your need for pay and everything, I feel like that's why we exist. We're the outside independent body representing the public and supposed to restrict you guys when you guys are looking for more. So, um, I think I'm just doing my diligence and the fact that, and I do see that this is a part of the CIP plan. And if your CIP plan is only to maintain what you have, I mean, sorry, but sometimes shit, sorry, things need to be replaced. Um, and the CIP plan should come to the point and know exactly when, where, and how to, you know, determine what policies and things need to be doing in that plan, within the plan to achieve that purpose, not in the master plan. So, um, I don't know if that's something that any other body else agrees with, but it's just something that I'll, I'll say over and over.
Thank you, Brian. Any other planning commission members want to weigh in on, uh, policy 13? Pro or con? Bryce?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept policy 13 as written. I think it is important to analyze, evaluate and plan for the buildings within the master plan because the master plan needs to be inclusive of where these potential buildings and facilities may go. So I move to adopt policy 13 as written.
Uh, is there a second to Bryce's motion?
Second.
Maureen, uh, seconds Bryce's motion to approve policy 13. Is there further, uh, discussion or debate? Mark?
Uh, yes, I think we should, you know, number one, Brian is absolutely right, but if we're going to leave this in there, then we should analyze, evaluate and plan for the expansion slash reduction of public buildings and facilities to meet the increased or decreased in demand for government services.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, if you want to make that as a friendly amendment, we would have to have Bryce and, uh, Maureen consent to, uh, the addition of those, uh, words, uh, to, uh, to that as a friendly amendment. Uh, Bryce, uh, is that something that, uh, you'd be comfortable with?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm always comfortable with reducing the role of government. So yes.
Okay. Maureen, are you comfortable with, uh, Mark's thoughts on, uh, adding those reduction or decrease, uh, language, uh, to that, uh, that policy?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Sam Booth, can we stick that in there then? So expansion slash, uh, reduction and increased demand or decrease? Or increase, decrease demand? Yep, that would work. Does that work with you, Mark? Put the slashes in there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, uh, Bryce has, uh, made the motion. Maureen has seconded it. We have a, a friendly amendment, uh, that Mark has offered to include those words in the policy 13. Uh, further discussion? Okay. I'll go ahead and call the roll. Uh, Christie?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Aye.
Uh, Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that's, uh, seven votes to, uh, zero to approve that as modified. Thank you very much, Mark. Those were very helpful, uh, suggestions. Um, we'll now move over to policy 14. And if we can consider policy 14 and policy 15 together, I don't have any objections to these two, but I think we can combine them and save, save us a policy when we're tallying up the scorecard. So Sam Booth, maybe on policy 14, if you could put a comma after the word needs, um, and then incorporate, uh, the, the language before, uh, or in policy 15. So after needs would be, uh, improve their physical and mental wellbeing. And then go ahead with, and enhance their quality of life. I think this is, uh, two policies that, uh, were previously in the recreation, uh, uh, element of, uh, previous master plans. But I think just, uh, simplifying it and combining, uh, might be an easy way to, uh, to cut down some, uh, some numbers and policies. I'd be happy to, uh, entertain, uh, uh, modifications or thoughts, uh, from my colleagues. Bryce?
Mr. Chairman, I move to incorporate policy 15 into 14 as written.
Thank you, Bryce. Is there a second?
Brian, I'll second.
Brian seconds the motion to make the modified policy 14 and drop policy 15. Is there further discussion? I'll call the roll. Kristi?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so unless there's seven votes aye, no votes nay. I think we are done then with the policies unless there are other additional policies that people want to add to the public facilities section of the, of the master, draft master plan. So we can go, I think, to action number one under public facilities. Brian, did you have thoughts on this one?
So this was kind of addressed in that prior one that I had mentioned. So if we're going to, you know, develop facilities, you know, I was just interested in knowing if that action was to increase or decrease. I think we saw that, that saying that whether it's an increase or decrease, we would address those space needs through this action. My only other question is, Sam, you guys need a new office that bad and you put this as action one for yourselves? But other than that, if no one else has any other comments, I'd move to approve action one.
Is there a second to Brian's motion to approve action one?
I'll second it, Mark.
Mark seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the roll. Kristi?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so there's seven votes aye, no votes nay. Action one is approved. Action six, I believe, is next on the list.
Yes, that's mine, and I have no idea what interstation impacts is. When I looked it up for a definition, I couldn't find it as a word that I could see in the master plan. I may be missing something. Does Sam Booth have anything to say about it?
Yes, ma'am. This is Sam Booth. I believe that's a, that's just a typo. That should be intersection impacts.
Okay.
Anything else, Maureen, on this action?
Nope, that was it. If there's no other comment, then I will move adoption of action six with the correction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? I'll call the roll on corrected action six. Kristi?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so on this there's six votes aye, or seven votes aye, no votes nay, and the action is approved. The next one is number 15, and I had flagged this one, and I have since educated myself to the database offerings. This is a, a action item that the, the library suggests to better improve their services. So I don't have any objections or concerns. I was just a little bit uncertain of what the language meant. The databases, there's our statewide databases that they would be looking to evaluate for possible addition. So unless members have questions or comments on that action, we can go ahead and move that one forward.
Well, I have a question, Mr. Chair. Why couldn't the library do that on their own? Why does it have to be in the master plan?
Sam, did you get any other education from the library staff? I did not reach out to them specifically on this. I, I would assume it's just something that they want reinforcement so that they can go out and probably prepare a document that says, here's the five or 10 new, new databases that we need to offer. And here's the four or five databases that they don't want to offer any further, and then they would come back for approval by the appropriate authorities to, to update what we have for services and what we need and what we don't need. But I would be happy to yield to you if you had any other clarifications from what, what the library wants to do.
This is Sam Booth, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I don't, I don't have any inside knowledge here. I believe this was an action that was included in the 2016 draft master plan. And my guess is that it was, as you said, it was input from the library themselves to Maureen's question, you know, why does that need to be included in the master plan? You know, as we've kind of talked about before, Tom, Tom did earlier, you might be able to point to this action if you're seeking out a grant, or if the library is coming to the commissioners to, you know, discuss doing this, they can say, well, this was an action that was in the plan that was approved.
Well, to me, it seems more appropriate to be a board policy as opposed to something that's in the master plan because their relationship is directly with the Board of Commissioners, not with the Planning Commission or, or anything else. I'm always in favor of taking a legal document and culling the laws that don't apply anymore, but this doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, Maureen. Other comments from members of the Planning Commission?
I have to agree with Maureen. I don't think we should even have it in the master plan.
Thank you, Dave. Other comments from planning commissioners? I think the only response I would have is, is that since the library is considered a, a part of the public services that we offer from a county perspective, that that's why they wanted to have this action in there. And I, I agree with you, Maureen, that it probably is something that the board should weigh in on, but I think if they wanted to delete it, or if they felt it was unnecessary, I probably would defer to the Board of County Commissioners and be inclined to, to leave it in at this point, for at least for, for them to discuss further. Other comments or thoughts?
Can they not discuss it further if we remove it? And wouldn't it be in the staff report that the Planning Commission remove these items from consideration in the master plan?
You're exactly correct, Maureen. The board, county commissioners, when they take up the master plan, can add or delete anything that they feel necessary. I just think it's probably better to leave it in there and then let them take a crack at it rather than having it deleted and then saying, well, to the Planning Commission, why did you delete this? But it's certainly the will of the, of the members of the Planning Commission to, to keep it in or take it out. Other, other comments? If there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion either to, to keep it in or take it, or take it out.
I move we take it out.
I'll second that.
Davis made the motion to remove action 15. Maureen has seconded that. Is there further discussion? Seeing, Bryce, did you have something, or do we want to move to a vote? Okay, let's move to the vote. This is Dave's motion to delete action 15. Kristi?
Aye.
Kristi votes aye. Bryce?
Nay.
Nay is Bryce. Dave?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. Mark? Mark, you might be muted there.
Nay.
Mark votes nay. Brian?
Nay.
Maureen?
Aye.
Maureen votes aye, and the chair votes nay. So on this, there's three votes aye and four votes nay. So the motion to delete is not approved. Now, Sam Taylor, I think you always prefer that we have a, a motion that would be a positive action on this to see if we can get an agreement. Would that be your recommendation on this motion, since it was three votes in favor and four votes against?
Yes, Sam Taylor, again, for the record, Mr. Chair, from the DA's office. It's a little bit more complicated than that here because what you're looking to do is include something that had been removed from the consent calendar. So in order for it to be added into the master plan, it would need to have at least five votes on a positive motion.
Okay. So would you like a positive motion, and then we'll see if we can get five votes on the positive motion?
Yeah, that's up to you, Mr. Chair.
I think that would be a wise course of action so we can give guidance. Brian, did you have a question or, or want to make a motion?
So maybe, Maureen, you can expand on the language here, you know, maybe adding or subtracting something that can help you be more in favor of this, you know, because to me, I, I feel there's no harm done by this statement. We're going to evaluate the database offerings again, and if they're, you know, not, not something we need, we don't use it, we don't pay for it. So I don't see any harm done in the statement, but is there something that can make this a little easier for you guys to swallow?
Well, for me, the, the issue is the, it just doesn't belong in the master plan as, as I see it. I, I see the value in them evaluating their database offerings as a course of business and run, and something that their board should vote on, and it should be validated by the Board of Commissioners. I just don't see its place being here, no matter how we rewrite it, rewrite it.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen. Bryce, did you have a comment or suggestion?
I have a comment. I'm just going to take a swing at a motion to approve action item 15 as written.
Okay. Bryce has moved to approve action item 15. Is there a second?
Brian will second.
Brian seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the roll on approving item 15. Kristi?
I'll change to aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Nay.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye. So on this, there's five votes aye, two votes nay. So action 15 is approved. Now, I'm not sure if we have additional action items, Sam Taylor. That's the one that I had thought might fit here. We included in the, in the economic development, so I think and if there's a public comment, action item that was proposed, we could move to that. If not, we'll move on to public safety.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Maureen.
I have an item that I'd like to present, and I, I couldn't decide if it was a policy or an action, but I'd like to submit it for consideration to adding to this element.
Fine. Do you want to read it, or do you, do you have draft that Sam could put up?
Encourage and support the implementation of water metering as a vehicle for water conservation and funding for new infrastructure improvements such as community wells and treatment facilities. We have a lot of pressure to deal with the lack of water in the valley and also to deal with the quality of the water. There isn't the amount of money that we need for perhaps Gardnerville to drill a new well when there's not enough to improve the infrastructure that we need. So with all the meters we have installed across the valley, I know the town of Mindon has meters, but they don't use them for billing purposes. So maybe if we had, if we could encourage the towns to use meters as a way of generating revenue, I mean, we could conserve some of the water that's in the aquifer and on the surface, and also use it to preserve the quality of the water.
Mr. Chair?
Does that make sense?
Thank you, Maureen. Sam Taylor, did you have a question or, or a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think the language that Sam had inserted, I think maybe he, you know, couldn't quite keep up or something, but the rest of the the item is missing, I believe.
Sam, if that's the case, I was going to ask Maureen if she could read that again for me. Thanks, Sam Taylor.
As a vehicle for water conservation and funding for new infrastructure improvements such as community wells and treatment facilities.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you, Sam Booth. Comments from members of the Planning Commission? Bryce, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, did you say Bryce?
Yes, please, go ahead, Bryce.
Thank you, sir. Maureen, this question is for you. When you say to implement, encourage and support the implementation of water metering, is that on existing residences? Is that in rural environments? Where, where is this going to exist? Because those words, I think, would be very concerning to the public as a whole.
Well, anytime there's an impact to the pocketbook, it's going to have a concern. I think in wherever we can use water meters, I know they have them up along Foothill that they use, and in Sheridan, which are semi-rural areas. We, they use them in Gardnerville and in the ranches. We have them in, I think, Chichester and across the town of Mindon, which aren't used for anything other than keeping track of how much water people are using. But I think if it was a countywide policy that any new subdivision, as well as exist, existing subdivisions that are not on wells, if they're using a municipal water system, they need to be monitored and charged accordingly. Otherwise, we will never get water conservation if people think they have free water. The amount of waste around this county is phenomenal to me.
Thank you, Maureen. Bryce, does that answer your question?
It does. So just for clarification, this would be on non-domestic wells. So anything that's a non-domestic well would be metered by the county and charged accordingly.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Just to, just to follow up, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So I, I haven't lived where I've, I've been on municipal water, so I, I don't know what the metering system is for the, the county. So I'm assuming based on Maureen's comments that some, or the majority or all of the existing homes in the county currently are not metered. Is that correct?
I don't know the extent of the metering. I know that Gardnerville has metering, and I think they use it in areas where the water quality has become tainted to the point of being non potable. They are on municipal water and they are billed for it. But the town of Mindon has, has meters that was installed several years ago to all existing and new development, and they don't use them to generate revenue to maintain the system or for water conservation. So that's where I'm getting. I think that we need to know the extent of metering and municipal systems need to look to that as opposed to the county general fund to create revenue to uphold and improve their delivery of services.
Thank you, Maureen. Tom Delair, did you have any information that you wanted to add? Is, you've, you've got a little bit of experience, I think, on this to answer Bryce's questions or to amplify what Maureen's been discussing?
Yeah, I'm, Tom Delair for the record. I, I believe that this is, I mean, I think what Maureen's getting to is the municipal water systems. Gardnerville does do a metering program or have a metering program. That's how they bill. Douglas County as well, if you're on a Douglas County watering system or water system, public water system that they do meter is also. I think Mindon has the meters and they are tracking the usage of each home, but they, I think they have still a, a flat fee unless you're outside of their town boundaries, and then it's, and then it's served as a meter. So the ranch in Gardnerville, which is located in the town of Gardnerville, I, I believe is being uh, I I believe is being metered. At least we were at the town when we used their water for our landscaping. So um, they do have that. They do have that option. I just don't know that the board's chosen to bill based on metering rates or bill a metering rate.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Dave Acola.
Yes, I brought this up at a BLCC meeting, uh, was held up at the lake. I suggested that they, uh, install water main water meters on all, uh, facilities within the county, uh, water system and the chairman of the BLCC didn't want to hear about that. Did I believe he is not metered on his house and didn't want a meter?
Okay, thank you, Dave. Bryce, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I understand correctly from Mr. Delair, the town of Minden, the town of Gardnerville and the county already have a policy in place or are not necessarily a policy, but are already doing water metering. So what would be the purpose of adding this?
Third, the town of Minden is charging like twenty seven dollars a month for water as much as you can use. So there's no incentive to conserve water. And I think that water usage and water charges should be more equitable across the county. I could be putting on my policymaker hat at the moment. But I I think it's important as we get more and more pressure to our aquifer and more and more changes to our climate, which I don't know if that's climate change or just the cycle of the earth right now. But we need to be a lot more consistent with the policies, goals and actions with regards to water usage across our county.
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions that, uh, members of the Planning Commission would have or comments on Maureen's proposed new action?
I do.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, uh, when I was a city engineer in, uh, Pennsylvania, they were having a problem, uh, with not enough supply. And I recommended that they start a program implementation program or installing new water meters everywhere. Well, there was a lot of, uh, pushback from a lot of people on that item. But they went ahead and, uh, started that program. When they did, their water got their water usage, uh, dropped sixty percent. And it saved them millions and millions of dollars by not having to build a new, uh, treatment plant. And I think that, uh, if the county starts a water metering program everywhere, that it will increase the availability of water within the, uh, Carson, uh, basin. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Dave. Very good points. Other comments or questions on, uh, the proposed new action? Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is definitely an important issue, but I'm still confused as to Mr. Delair said that the county currently has metering, Minden currently has metering and Gardnerville currently has metering. However, the way that it's being implemented is in Maureen's judgment and and David's judgment, not acceptable. I guess I would ask Mr. Taylor, does does the county have the ability to demand how Minden, the towns of Minden and Gardnerville implement their metering program?
Sam Taylor, you want to take a crack at them? There they have their own water systems. Maybe Tom Delair can also weigh in. They have their own water systems. So can we dictate to towns, uh, uh, if they have, uh, 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 functioning entities under their own jurisdiction? But go ahead, Sam Taylor. You want to try that one first? You're muted, Sam Taylor. Sam Taylor? Sam? Sam? Si? Sam? Sam?
Sorry.
Sorry, frozen mute button. Go ahead.
Start from the start.
Yeah, I changed the configuration on my, uh, screen. Again, Sam Taylor for the record, Mr. Chair from the Douglas County DAs. Um, I don't know the answer right off the top of my head, to be perfectly frank, but I do believe that the Board of County Commissioners would have to approve any rate increase that that the town amended would employ. Um, also, I do have some concerns about the way that the language is in terms of the clarity that I think, uh, Mr. Klutz is trying to to bring out, which is, you know, you can have metering so that you can actually check and and um, uh, I guess, uh, see how much water is being used. But there's a difference between that and charging, uh, for the usage based on, you know, like, for example, inclining block rate or other forms of rates. So the rate, I think, is what Maureen, uh, is trying to go for, um, to increase the rate and to charge based on usage, uh, as opposed to just a flat rate.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Maureen, did Sam Taylor put words in your mouth, or is that, uh, the thrust of what you're, uh, looking for in this action item?
Well, I I live in Minden and heaven knows I don't want to pay more water for more money for water. But I'm willing to do that because I think what's what I'm really going for, there are two things. There's the equitability because people on different waters, municipal water systems throughout the county are paying different rates. If they're paying anything at all. This isn't to punish anyone, but it is to preserve and address the issues that we have during drier years when we don't have enough water to service the homes that exist now. We won't have enough water or money to improve or sustain the structures, the infrastructure that will be existing. And I think it's just good policy to conserve water as much as we can. We're taking a lot of water from Tahoe. So our wetlands are fine. But I I just think it's overall, it's good policy, and if they can generate the revenue as an enterprise fund through the water system, then they don't have to be coming to the County General Fund in order to get these improvements.
Thank you, Maureen. Um, Mark, why don't you go next, and then we'll move to Tom Delair?
So I understand what Maureen's trying to do. I would tell you that the town of Minden is very proud of their heritage and having the lowest water rates, I think, in the state of Nevada. And they will tell you that they have done so using an enterprise fund. And, um, they have come up with innovative ways to use more water, i.e. sell it to the county, and the county sells it to Carson City so that they can maintain their backlog or not their backlog, their existing water rights that are on the book. Uh, so the Nevada has a use it or lose it type of statute, and the town of Minden is saying, but we want to use all the water we possibly can, so we don't lose it. And, uh, I kind of have to side with the town of Minden on this one. They've done a wonderful job. Uh, so I would hate to impinge on their autonomy. And as far as the Gardnerville Town Water Company, Douglas County has no say at all because it's a nonprofit water company.
Thank you, Mark. Tom, did you have a comment or two that you wanted to to throw out there?
Oh, yeah. No, thank you, Chairman Mulder. This is Tom Delair for the record. Um, yeah, the, um, the enterprise funds are are being are operating those water systems today. So are you familiar with uh, the the general funds monies being used to operate water systems? I'm not aware of of that, Maureen. It sounded like in your last comments that that was kind of where you were heading.
Yeah, well, I don't I don't know how they, I don't know the ins and outs of how they operate the water systems. But for some upgrades, it's gonna, I believe, more money than what the enterprise funds can handle. And but I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not I'm not an expert on Nevada, uh, water systems.
Yeah, there are a number of accounts. I know the county is operating off of an enterprise fund, you know, the Public Works Department, and there's, uh, multiple funds and that share, you know, staff and resources and facilities. Um, they do have, like Brian had brought up earlier with the CIP, and they are replacing water lines and Minden does this as well. Um, Gardnerville Water has a CIP and we coordinated uh, in the town when we were gonna redo road improvements, we coordinated with the water company to see if if, um, if they needed to upgrade their lines. Uh, so I know that coordination has happened, uh, and is happening today. So I don't, um, I don't know of any situations where a water where municipal water system is using funds from the general fund.
Okay, well, I just, I want to say I'm really appreciative of people putting up with me having this conversation about water because I think it's really, really important. And I want to thank everybody for their comments. It looks like this is gonna fail, so I will move to remove the new action proposed.
Uh, I don't think there was a motion on the table, Maureen. Um, uh, you're 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 more than, uh, I'm more than willing to have you make the motion and let the chips fall where they may. If you want to, uh, call for a vote, if you would like to withdraw the language, uh, I don't think that'll require a formal motion and a and a vote.
It doesn't, Sam Taylor?
Yeah, Sam Taylor again for the record, uh, the chair is correct. It does not require a motion to remove the language. All you have to do, uh, Ms. Casey, is just indicate that you want to remove it.
If there's no other discussion, then I will remove it. But I think this is a conversation we need to have, and we need to have it often.
Thank you, Maureen. I I agree with you. It's a very valid, very valid point and a very important, uh, topic. Um, having, uh, uh, moved, uh, off of that item, uh, Sam Taylor or Sam Booth, was there anything else in, uh, in the, uh, uh, public facilities that we needed to consider? Are we ready to move forward to public safety?
Yeah, this is Sam Booth, Chairman Mulder. I had a note that you had requested an action for broadband, but I believe we added that to economic development.
That's correct.
Uh, okay. And then I I had, um, and this was from, I believe, our first or second meeting, this highlighted uh, for public comment, um, to add an action item here. Uh, and I think we had some public comment, uh, at the beginning of the meeting today on this same item. So I'll throw this this, uh, action up here and, uh, let the the commission debate it.
Okay, do you want to read that, Sam Booth? I'm not sure how many if with everybody can read the screen or for the people who are listening, if it's not up on the screen, go ahead and read that for us.
Yes, okay. So this is an action item for, um, relating to art and cultural facilities. Uh, stating that Douglas County should examine public funding for art and cultural facilities and forming a public arts coalition with the towns of Minden and Gardnerville, Main Street Gardnerville and the Carson Valley Arts Council and other interested parties to develop cultural and performing arts interests.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Maybe, uh, the word should be form instead of forming, uh, in the second line there. I'm not the English major of this, uh, operation, but, uh, uh, I'll defer to my colleagues for, uh, comments. I did note that this was a public funding of arts and cultural activities was mentioned very frequently in the public, uh, survey that we did. Uh, so I do thank, uh, Sam Booth for you, you for bringing this forward, uh, as something that was mentioned, uh, often in the in the survey and then in recent public comments in our meetings. So I'll yield any of my colleagues for, uh, their thoughts or, uh, questions. Brian, did you want to go on this one?
Um, you know, I just say, you know, I know we're trying to develop interests and I do understand the purpose of this, um. But, you know, are we really going to convince people to, you know, have a cultural and performing arts interest? Um, you know, I know that we can encourage, you know, people to I don't know, I just, I don't know how I can say the second half of that and. Um, you know, I just don't know that everybody can be convinced that they need cultural, cultural and performing arts. And I do understand its importance in every county. I just don't know how we, you know, perform that action, I guess, and accomplish that action. I don't know. Um, but I do think that this is an action that I I am in agreement with. I just think maybe cleaning it up a little bit. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Brian. Other members of the Planning, uh, Commission? Maureen?
Maybe we should, uh, encourage or support public funding as opposed to dedicating Douglas County examining to, because to me that reads that Douglas County should fund it. And then, uh, coalition between the towns of Minden and Gardnerville, Main Street Gardnerville, et cetera.
Okay, thank you for that suggestion. Other suggestions on, uh, improving or modifying the language or comments?
To Brian.
Brian?
I think I found my word, you know, instead of develop, maybe we enhance the cultural and performing arts interests in this county, um. You know, not saying that we're gonna develop new, um, but we enhance those interests, you know, I can develop new people to become interested. I don't know. I mean, again, develop is a hard word for me here.
So Sam Booth, I think, uh, Brian's saying, uh, enhance rather than develop in that second to last, uh, line there. I think that's, uh, that's a worthy modification. Other members of the Planning Commission want to weigh in on the on the proposed new action?
Well, how would, how would we say, we've said it before about, um, grants? In other sections, we wrote about Douglas County helping with grants, the historic grants and historic monuments and things like that. I I just don't want to put the county on the hook for all the funding for this, but we can support if they need us to to write a letter or sign off on a form to help them seek grant funding to enhance the cultural and performing arts in Douglas County. I'm willing to support that. I just don't want to put the county on the hook.
Thank you, Maureen. I don't see that this is putting the county on the hook. Uh, encouraging public funding might be writing support letters, uh, enhancing cultural and performing arts could be just a publicity. Uh, Bryce, I had your hand up, and then Christie, and then Brian. Can we go in that order, Bryce, Christie and Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No other action item that I'm, oh, I guess the one right above it says Douglas County will. I I think that encouraging funding for art, I I don't know that we want in the master plan to encourage public funding. Uh, you know, public fundings, you you to have public funding, you have to have revenue. You have to have a source of that. So I think that funding can come, as Maureen stated, from grants. I think it can come, you know, potentially from the general fund if there's room in the general fund to do so. It could come from fundraising. It can come from, I mean, there's a number of places it could come from, and I think that the county should encourage funding for these. I just don't necessarily think it should state that Douglas County should encourage public funding. I think it should just say encourage funding.
Thank you, Bryce. That that might be a good suggestion to clarify some of the things. Christie, you were next.
Uh, I was gonna say, I've developed in a lot of cities that have a development impact fee, um, that it goes towards a general fund, and then it can be used however it's set up. So just that could be a funding source, just to throw it out there.
Thank you, Christie. Brian, you're next.
So another word, um, you know, the interest there at the end, are we gonna actually try and enhance the facilities? Um, you know, because if we get all this money, we wouldn't spend, I don't know how you spend money on interest. Um, you know, we would be spending the money, I would think, on facilities or murals or whatever. Um, again, interest, um, is losing me again there. And I do like Bryce's comments that, you know, public funding, maybe we encourage the, um, you know, support to locate funds, um, not necessarily committing public funds to this type of purpose, um. Uh, I still, I I find all sorts of problems here. I just, I I think it's good. I just don't know, as written, I I'm having trouble still.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian, uh, I think both your suggestion and Bryce's suggestion were good ones, maybe take out the word public. And then take out the word interests at the end, uh, I think that still might read alright. And other interested parties to enhance cultural and performing arts. Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna dictate language to, to, uh, to the collective group, but in interest of trying to, uh. Clarify and uh, um, make it a, a more generic. Um, indication of support is, I think, what, uh, what the intention would be on this for the people who, uh, were, uh. Highlighting this in the public comments. Um, other members of the Planning Commission, like the language, don't like the language, uh, um, more changes to the language, Brian?
I like cutting it off at arts right there, I think that achieves what I was trying to do, um, facilities, you know, specific, and I was trying not to be specific, cutting it off there does that. Exact purpose, thanks, Kurt.
Thank you. Bryce?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the new action item as written.
Is there a second to Bryce's motion to adopt the language as written?
Second.
Final second.
I heard Maureen first, uh, uh, Brian, so Bryce makes the motion, Maureen seconds the motion, is there a further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote on the new proposed action item, uh, Christie.
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the chair votes, uh, aye, so on this there's seven votes aye, no votes nay, and that new item is approved. Uh, now, if we can move to a public safety, I think, uh, we only have about six items that we need to go through on public safety. This starts on packet page sixty-six. So, I would like to go ahead and try and move through all of these if we can in the next half hour or forty-five minutes and then take a break after that. If that meets with the, uh, yeah, the agreement of the Planning Commission. Okay, um, Sam, uh, Sam Booth, I think we're on policy number, uh. Uh, one, I think there was only the two goals and those were not highlighted, so policy number one.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, I think this was highlighted, uh, to be pulled from yourself, uh, Maureen and, and, uh, Brian.
Okay, I'll yield to Maureen or Brian for comments, uh, if they'd like to begin.
I just had a little. Sarcastic comment asking another district. We have so many districts in this county.
Okay, Ma- Maureen, thank you, uh, Brian, did you wanna with, toss something out and then we'll let the staff maybe give a quick explanation of this policy?
Uh, similar to Maureen, you know, another district, but, uh, really saying, you know, what was, what's Courtney's purpose and, uh. The other similar agencies and can't this be something that they're working on, because I believe. Um, there is the stormwater solution going in off Johnson Lane, I, I, I mean. There's too many things to going on here to figure it out, but I think her job kinda speaks to this and the need for another special district, I don't know.
Thank you, Brian, uh, Sam Booth, Tom Delair, do either one of you wanna take a, a short minute or two and explain, uh, where we're on this policy?
Um, yeah, thank you, Chairman Walder, this is Tom Delair for the record. Uh, yeah, this, this policy, uh, the county tried, uh, under Larry Warner's direction to do a stormwater. Uh, program, you know, countywide and, uh. And they put together a big working group and the working group couldn't even come together to approve an agenda for a meeting, so. Uh, is what it ended up, uh, folding up and then they created the stormwater department that Courtney that you referred to. Um, and it started in, in community development and was later moved to public works and. Expanded into storm drain maintenance, so Courtney's. Um, position is really the maintaining the waterways and then, and then dealing with, um. With some of these elevation certificates and those things, eventually, I think the elevation certificates will come back here, but. The maintenance and the storm drainage that she's working towards and implementing like the Johnson Lane, uh, regional. Drainage plan, uh, which includes creating detention basins uphill of Johnson Lane residents. Uh, to reduce the amount of floodwaters going down into the neighborhoods. And, uh, she is implementing that plan and, and providing that, that service. Um, I think this is a little bit bigger, uh, countywide program, plus, uh, plus there are a number of drainage. Basins that are being analyzed now and we're getting funding through Carson River Subconservancy. Uh, through grants on an annual basis that we have to apply for, uh, where additional studies similar to Johnson Lane. Can be performed, so that, that effort is moving forward. Um, I think it was B to expand that effort, uh, out of, and get it out of what, um. Courtney's responsibilities are as far as the maintenance portion of it goes and there's a planning section, so, uh, I believe that's what this is about.
Thank you, Tom, so would it be your professional opinion that this, uh, it would go beyond what, uh, what we're, what is currently being done by the, uh. By the county and that would be a, uh, an important policy for the county to adopt, that the special district would, uh, broaden. The efforts and that's a, that's a needed policy, that's, that, am I putting words in your mouth, Tom, or is that your professional opinion? This is, this would be a needed improvement over our current efforts?
Uh, I think we need to improve our current efforts, uh, the policy helps, helps kind of focus on that. Uh, this is a pretty, a broad-based policy, but, um. But it would, you know, provide some, some guidance there if we needed to go and, and get, um. You know, some funding again, bring out the funding again, cause it's gotta be in some sort of plan that we're looking into. To creating some sort of entity that would, uh, that would ultimately, um. Be responsible for either collecting revenue to, 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 to run that entity or. Or to, uh, manage that stormwater regionally, um, in, in the county. In, in, I guess by each drainage basin, we have a number of drainage basins within the county, so, um. So it'd be basically a county program. Does that help?
Yes, thank, thank you, that, that, uh, that's very helpful, I, I do, uh, have Maureen and Brian's concerns, uh. Expansion is, is something that's always, uh, uh, uh. Something to be considered very carefully and pay for is or something to be considered carefully, but if it's necessary and it's an improvement, then that's something we need to judge on its merits. Uh, Mark, I saw your, Mark, I saw your hand up, go ahead.
Uh, yes, so to me, this is just a money group. All you're trying to do is create a special district. And this special districts can only be created in those districts that do not, that are not up against the property tax cap. Uh, and to assess just those districts instead of the entire county. To me is. Uh, misappropriation of funds, I think the entire county needs to be assessed and maybe there should be a special parcel tax. But I don't think creating a special district, cause all you're gonna grab is Johnson Lane. Uh, you'll grab the agricultural areas, but you're not gonna grab Minden. I think you grab Gardenville. Or grid and, uh, it's, you know, very limited.
Thank you, Mark, uh, other members of the Planning Commission that wanna weigh in, uh, pro or con on this policy? Brian, Brian, were you looking to, to speak or, uh, Dave, I can't? Go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, I was looking to speak, I was just gonna mirror what Mars says, or Mark says, anytime you hear special district, we all can look at our tax roll from our property taxes. See that all that means is another line, a new rate, if we aren't subject to that cap again, you know, the, you know, he's exactly right, you know, if it doesn't apply to everybody. Um, you know, I know life's not fair, but in a sense of a county and services. Uh, if everybody's betting fitting from the services, it's not fair that only a few have to pay for those, so. Um, you know, when I look at the district and how it would get charged and how you pay for that person that's gonna have to be there to administer it, whether it be Courtney moving out of the county or whatnot. There's additional money there and you gotta pay for it and, uh, you know, formation of any district, I think. You know, the consideration's okay, but, you know, I, I think just removing it's here, I think we nip that and before we ever have to hear all the negative comments regarding it.
Thank you, Brian. Dave, any comments on, uh, this one from, uh, your end?
Yeah, I, I'd recommend that we, uh, eliminate this policy, I can't see it as being beneficial for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Um, anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, I think we can entertain a motion either for or against this, uh, policy then and, uh, we'll have further debate or, uh, move to a question. Is there a member who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we remove policy one from the safety element.
Dave, uh, seconded Brian's motion to delete policy one, is there a further discussion or debate? If not, I'll call the question, this is deleting policy one, uh, Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen? You might be in mute, Maureen?
Sorry, hi.
Maureen votes aye and Chair votes aye, so this is a seven aye and a no nays and that's to, uh, remove policy one. Uh, policy number two. Um. Brian, I think you had questions or a comment on policy two?
Uh, so again, you know, the public purchase, uh, again, you know, something not again, a big fan of. Uh, I do understand we have a parks rec department, they already got some parks to maintain and they already have trouble maintaining the parks we already have. Um, you know, when we look on expanding that, how do we get there, we pay more. Um, so when I'm looking at this one right here, um, this one's a little more flood prone areas and I do understand that. But again, that Carson River flood plan that Courtney had in front of us and I believe will be coming back. Um, I think achieves a lot of these purposes, so, you know, I was just looking at this one, maybe Sam can provide more clarity as to what they're trying to achieve here. That can maybe provide amenable amendments to this or, you know, my, my opinion initially was removed for a fix, so. Um, I'd like to see what a fix would be or whether that isn't possible or what other people think.
Thank you, Brian, uh, Sam Booth, did you have, uh, uh, any response to Brian's questions or thoughts?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, this is Sam Booth, I can try to respond, Brian, um, but might defer to the engineer on staff, Tom Delair, our director. Uh, but just, uh, I think, um, you know, the second half of the sentence is, is saying dedication for public usage. Um, so those flood prone areas, um, high-risk areas to flood. Um, you could consider them for dedication if there was a development, uh, or something like that adjacent to it. Uh, but the, yeah, the first section is speaking to, uh, public purchase and, you know, that would be, uh, I don't know if that's through. Um, uh, the, the Parks Department, uh, and funding that they would have or just funding that the county would have. You know, maybe it's related to that special district that was in policy number one, uh, those type of things, but if there's an area that's prone to flooding. Um, should the county examine purchasing that to keep development out of that area? Um, uh, or, uh, you know, to, to use it for flood detention, uh, or something else like that, but, uh. As I said, I, I'd also defer to Tom for his opinion.
Tom Delair, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chairman Walder, Tom Delair for the record. Um, yeah, no, Sam Booth is right on that, it's, this is something where, where we need to, um. I guess start planning for access and maintenance of the storm drainage now that we do have a, a. A small, um, uh, I guess it's manned, um, maintenance. Uh, through public works that we, we have staffed that now for, for drainage and allowing access to those drainage basins. And then take it one step further and, and start using the drainage facilities to connect, uh, neighborhoods. Of, be, you know, between parks areas and, and drainage areas so that, uh, so that it would be open to the public. Um, to utilize that open space that the county ends up maintaining and accessing and then you have a multi-use trail or path. Uh, that would be shared, uh, for maintenance and also used by the public, uh, during, during non-flooding events. Um, I don't know, uh, why the wildlife habitat was included on this section, but, um. But we are, we are trying to, to have developments actually consider. Uh, you know, the, the downstream effects of their project on the irrigation network. It's in particular around Minden and Gardenville, cause all the drainage from the two towns. Uh, goes into a, an irrigation system, so, um, I think that was brought up in ag element earlier. And your guys' conversations and, and that trash keeps getting into the ditch systems and. And being, and, uh, causing some extra effort on the rancher's portion to keep the ditches clean. And, and, um, you know, this would, this would allow that access, you know, for, for county. Staff or town staff to get in and, and keep those, those conveyances, uh, clean. Uh, based on their amount of stormwater being contributed to the drainage system.
Thank you, Tom. Brian, did that?
So, so I would say, you know, just, as Sam, you know, why not just remove the buy public purchase, you know, just leave it at buy dedication, you know. Typically Rancho Sierra, you know, we took that detention facility, they gotta dedicate that, you know, either to grid or somebody for maintenance or there's. H O A or there's something that has to maintain it, but we don't have to pay for that. You know, I, I would hesitant to put the public purchase in there, or we just start going and buying all these things up every time that somebody puts one of these in, why not have, make the developers put it in? They dedicate it and then we can use money to enhance that area through our other policies that we have here. Um, I don't think the purchase of it is what really facilitates that, I think it's really just making sure that if there is an area that is flood prone. Within a development that needs detention, um, there was a property up in Reno, um, the guy was having to detain, you know. Six acres of his property and was able to come up with clever ways to reduce that to one acre. But detention is ninety-nine point nine-nine percent required, so, you know, that is always something that we're gonna see with developments. And if we're turning them into parks and sports facilities and things like that, I think we're doing better for those areas. Um, and having the developer dedicated after they've converted it into such areas or made it so that we can convert it into such areas. Um, I think that, and, you know, allows the county to have a lot less money to have to put into this and I'm for. The person who's paying for the development, paying for that to be put in, so, I prefer it's not by public purchase, but it's by dedication. You know, and after, maybe if wildlife habitat needs to come out, you know, by developers, you know, that, you know, when this area is developed and it's near these areas. They're gonna do the right thing to dedicate public uses or parkways, sports facilities, and that's according to our open space requirements, so. Naturally, then everybody goes to public or plan development, may they, maybe they go around it, but at least it's there to, if they can't get around it, you know. Have them dedicate that area for those types of usage. Um, we did convert that Rancho Sierra one, I think that's fairly successful and I see that as something that we can succeed on in the future. Um, and I think we should build off dedication, not purchasing.
Thank you, Brian, so you would be suggest taking out after the word acquisition by public purchase or. Um, any other thoughts or comments on the, on the language, uh, in policy two? Or Brian suggesting to remove those, that portion of it? Mark, go ahead.
And that is. When. A plan is approved and that plan says you're gonna dump it into an irrigation ditch. Does the community development department look to see if there's an adequate right of way to clean it at that time? Or do, does the community development department trust the water conveyance advisory board? Or how do we make sure that there is a right of way to get in there and clean something if, uh, a new development is approved?
Tom, can you respond?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Walder, this is Tom Delair for the record, yeah, um. Member Ned Rip, this is, uh, I, yeah, Water Conveyance Advisory Committee, we rely heavily, uh, on, on, on letting us know. When, uh, there are issues with easements and things, uh, our, our G I S department is working on, on. On improving the, the mapping system that we have in G I S so that staff can, can look at, um. At what the applicant's been, is proposing. Uh, I think we need to change some of the code and design criteria requirements to examine downstream facilities as well.
You know, if there's capacity increases or, or whatever. But we, we need to do a better job at, at that, at really monitoring the irrigation drainage network that we, that we have today. So it's important to look at, and we are relying heavily on the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee to, to let us know about those issues.
Thank you, Tom. Mark, did you want to follow up, or have anything else that you had thoughts on, on Policy Two?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tom, was there something else you needed to add?
Yeah, just on the public purchase portion of it, there has, has been some ponds that have not been dedicated to the county over the years. You know, and, and I think that's why it was included, that we might have to go back and actually acquire some of that stuff if it's, if it is indeed a regional improvement. So I know we're running into that issue today.
Thank you, Tom. So your preference would be to leave the public purchase option in there just to give the county more flexibility?
Yeah, yeah, we could put it after dedication if we wanted to put dedication first, but.
Well, we could indicate a, a preference for dedication, but you make a, you make a good point there. Other comments on the language in Policy Two, either for or against, or modifications? Brian, Brian, would you be okay if we left in the public purchase and say something effective for consideration, preferably by dedication? But if necessary, by public purchase? Or is that money, money the water's too much, Brian?
I do. And that if you do have instances where you've messed this up in the past, you have to go buy it. You know, I think policies are more forwards-looking than backwards-looking, you know, in my perspective. Having made the mistake, it's a mistake that we have to rectify, but it's not something we're seeking to do in the future, unless leaving it here makes me still feel the same way about the public purchase. So, you know, because yes, we go correct the mistakes, but then we leave it open to just whatever they feel like after that. So, you know, correcting mistakes is one thing, but I think leaving this in here, this is a future decision outside of correcting those mistakes, and that's why I'm more opposed to keeping it out.
Thank you. It, it's your call, because you're the one who offered this for review. So go ahead, and if you want to make the motion, delete the public purchase language, or however you feel most comfortable, we can go ahead.
Well, and I'm, and I'm even reading it again, and I would say, you know, that if we do go for that deletion, you know, I think I'd still leave it kind of confusing if you say acquisition by dedication. Those two words kind of sound conflicting. So I'd say should be considered for dedication for public usage as parkways. Basically saying that we should consider it for dedication first. I'm not preventing you guys from going out and having fixed those mistakes that have happened in the past. But any future developments, we're going to consider this right away, is what this policy says to me as the way I've just changed it.
Very good. Do you want to offer that as a motion, then?
So I'd offer, offer that we approve Policy Two as amended.
Is there a second to Brian's motion to approve Policy Two as amended? Striking out the acquisition by public purchase language?
Second.
Dave Akola seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on approval of the modified version of Policy Two. Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye, so there's seven votes aye, no votes nay, and Policy Two as amended is adopted. We're up to Policy Seven. Mark, I think you had a question or a comment or suggestion on Policy Seven?
So, my question is, this is again, the irrigation drainage maintenance stuff, and are we putting on the maps the easements for cleaning and for maintaining all of these ditches? And are these easements going all the way downstream to ensure that we're not overloading the last person on the ditch with too much stormwater?
Thank you, Mark. Tom, is that in your bailiwick, or somebody else want to weigh in?
No, I, I, I believe that it's difficult to find all the easements, Mark, that are out there on those irrigation ditches. And, and right now, what is required by an applicant is to show what's on their property as far as the easements go and the improvements. If there's some improvements made to capacity, but the, then, then that's another story. But, but it's, right now, the way the, the design standards are written is that they're not supposed to be increasing the capacity. So they're supposed to be retaining the water on site so that theoretically, it's the same amount of water going down the ditch. So right now, we're not getting easement shown on the project plans that go clear to back to the river, back to a major irrigation ditch.
So, I know, I don't know for certain, but I've been told that on the Allerman Virginia ditch that there has been building, that people have actually constructed buildings in the easement that is needed to clean the ditch. And, you know, until somebody is bold enough to, I guess, sue them to take down the building, or, you know, somehow other remove it, I don't know how this is going to come to a head. But I know that that's happened in the past, and I just don't want that to happen in the future.
Right. That, that particular instance is, they piped it, I believe. They put a pipe in that's inadequate in size to convey the irrigation water on the, I think it's the upper allman around the pond. Is that the one you're referring to?
Well, I was told by Gary Iasi that somebody actually encroached on the easement for cleaning with their house.
Yeah, yeah.
Sam, Sam Booth, did you have a comment that you want to do, that's pertinent here to Mark's questions?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. No, just, just that I think hearing Mark's comments, I think that's what this policy is trying to achieve here, is that, you know, reviewing those encroachments and structure setbacks, making sure we review those to eliminate conflicts with, whether it be easements, the ditch itself, or just the conveyance of the water.
Thank you, Sam. Mark, do you think we need to strengthen this by adding another sentence or so in there to, to say something about putting the easements on maps? Or do you think it's, it's okay as long as you, you hold the county's feet to the fire on this?
Well, I just look at it and say, if I'm poor Tom, and somebody hasn't put the easements on the map, how the heck am I going to know that there's one there? You know, what I'd love to do is to push this over to the title companies and say, "Look, if you offered title insurance on the scene and you didn't put the easements on the map, then you're the one that probably ought to pay." So maybe... So encroachments and structural setbacks should be reviewed, and easement placements should be required on all future maps to eliminate conflict and ensure the maintenance. I think that'll do it.
Sam, do you want to read that in, in total for everybody? And then we'll just hit a confirmation that that's, that's what everybody thinks is good language?
I can do that, Mr. Chair. So it would read, "Encroachments and structure setbacks should be reviewed, and easement placements should be required on future maps to eliminate conflicts and ensure the maintenance of the conveyance ditch and/or storm drain system can be achieved."
Thank you, Sam. Mark, that really looks good to me. I think you improved that. Is that, is that where you were good-looking to go?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy Seven as amended.
Okay, Mark is a move to approve Policy Seven as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Christie, I heard you seconding, and Brian, I saw your hand up. Did you have a comment or a suggestion to make on this language?
So when I'm reading this as a policy, guys, Sam, if this is required on a map, Sam Taylor, I mean, what would be the implication that if we say this here, and we have a development, or someone, say, somebody comes forward and then it's not on the map? I mean, I know it's not related to this, but is there any way a developer could use that required statement against us within a lawsuit related to a development or anything?
Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County DAs. I, I don't think so, because it said should be required on future maps. So I think it covers most circumstances. In addition, I think it is reasonable and logical to require such easements to be placed on maps in the future. If there's nothing else, to basically identify the easements and to prevent people from perhaps building fences or buildings within the easement to prevent the proper cleaning and maintenance of the ditches, which is, I think, in the benefit and interest of the entire county.
I, I just wanted to make sure you're okay that it wasn't restrictive enough. And I guess I, you read right over, should be, you know, broad enough, I guess, with those terms. So I fully support. I just wanted to make sure it weren't restrictive and get us into trouble.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have the motion on the table that Mark has made, and Christie is second for the modified language in Policy Seven. Is there further discussion or debate? I'll call the roll. Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. This is seven votes aye, no votes nay, then that's approved as modified. Policy Nineteen. Maureen, I think you might have had a question or comment on Policy Nineteen?
Yes, this somewhat tails onto what Mark was talking about. One, there's a typo. It should not be practical. It should be practicable. On the third line, practicable. And then, I need some bele. There you go. Is serial parcelling still allowed in the floodplain?
Sam Taylor, or Sam Booth, go ahead.
I can speak to that, Maureen. This is Sam Booth. For the record, no, ser-, any division of land is, is not allowed in the floodplain. And you can't, you can't divide the floodplain itself. So if the floodplain is on, you know, a portion of the floodplain is on one, let's say it's a 20-acre parcel or a 40-acre parcel, you can't draw lots across that floodplain to split it into, you know, several other parcels. So that wouldn't be the case. So I don't know, you know, it sounds like this is speaking to areas previously developed. But I think this is, this is something that would be a, a code change or a discussion within the development code, potentially more than a policy within the master plan. Just my opinion.
Okay, and I agree with you. A lot of these things that we have in here will be taken care of when we get through the development code and make all the changes that you, over the last couple of years, you and Tom have been making note of. And I think that's an important distinction, and perhaps we want to remove this policy from the master plan and allow it to run its course through the development code.
Thank you, Maureen. Brian, and then Bryce, if you had your hand up, but go ahead, Brian.
So to piggyback on the way Maureen ended there, you know, again, policies, when you think of policies, I think this is more of an action. If, Sam, you're really intending to go look at what we've done in the past, study what's currently there. Policies, again, I think are more forward-looking than backwards-looking. And so, you know, I'd be more in favor of it as an action than a policy, having not heard what Sam said there, that they want to analyze what's currently here.
Thank you, Brian. Bryce, did you have your hand up, or do we need to? Okay. Maureen, did you want to maybe move this to a, a action and change the wording at all? Or are you more inclined to just drop it totally at this point?
Well, we can move it to an action and always during a mast, after they get the title for the development code revised to incorporate this language, we can remove it from the master plan during an update. But for right now, I will move that Policy Nineteen has changed, be removed from policies and moved to actions.
Okay, Maureen has made the motion to change this to an action and modify the language. Is there a second?
Brian will second.
Brian seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? I'll call the roll. Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye, so this is seven votes aye, no votes nay. So we move it to an action, change the language. Policy Twenty-Six. Brian, I think you might have the same thought I had on this one, whether it's duplicative or can be combined with Policy Sixteen, but go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess now that we've approved Sixteen, I would be more in favor of the removal. Sam Taylor, maybe you can give us the thoughts on, if we've approved Sixteen, is there any way to combine them? Or do we need to just simply remove this? Because I think we can just remove it. Sixteen achieves its purpose anyways. So give us your thoughts on a combination, but I'm more in favor of removal anyways.
I think, Brian, I can jump in there. We always have the, the ability to go back to Policy Sixteen at a, at a later date and tweak it a little bit if we need to tweak it, if Policy Twenty-Six and Sixteen are close, but not 100% duplicative. So I think your first suggestion, and I'll again defer to Sam Taylor, I think your first suggestion is, is the most valid one, just delete Policy Twenty-Six at this point. Unless, unless, Sam, you would disagree with that way of proceeding now.
Ms. Chair, Members of the Commission, Sam Taylor on behalf of Douglas County DAs. I would just recommend removal of Policy Twenty-Six. I think that would eliminate all the problems and eliminate the conflict. Simpler.
Thank you, Sam. Brian, do you want to make the motion?
I'll move that we remove Policy Twenty-Six from the settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? I'll call the roll. Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye, seven votes aye, no votes nay, so that one is removed. And then I think at the end, the last one we have to take action on is Action Number Six. I had comments on this, but Maureen, I'll be happy to yield to you first for your thoughts.
Well, I'm, I'm more neutral on this than anything. But I want to know, when we're talking about information sharing, there's also the underlying information gathering by whatever network is doing the sharing, whether it's Facebook Nextdoor or whatever. So I just want to get that out there and off my chest that I don't, I recognize that a lot of people do social media, but I also realize that there is the demon that no one realize that there is the demon that no one addresses. And that's mostly just a comment.
Thank you, Maureen. Uh, I share your concerns there. I'm not a big, uh, social network purpose, a person. Uh, and I, I too would say, uh, information sharing is always something I have concerns about whether the, uh, that's a, a appropriate role for the county to, to, uh, to be promoting. Uh, I would imagine Sam Booth, and I did not investigate this further, that this is an action that was either recommended by, uh, the consultant or recommended by the, uh, uh, public information officer or the sheriff's, uh, department that they thought this was a worthwhile, uh, uh, effort to, uh, to promote, uh, lawful activity. Um, did you, uh, have any comments to add on that, Sam, or, uh, uh, care to share anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, that's correct. This was an act, this action was, uh, suggested by the consultants, uh, and it was included as a, a proposed new action in the survey audit and it was highlighted as, as green to keep. Uh, just through that survey audit. So staff, uh, moved it forward, left it in there, but, um, this is a new just suggested action.
Thank you, Sam. Would you say then that the, the sheriff's office or the public information officer have, uh, reviewed this and, uh, it, uh, it meets their approval? Um, uh, I think, uh, I think in, in general, all of these are probably going to be looked at by, uh, the, the, uh, relevant staff in the coming, uh, week or so. Uh, so we'll be able to get their comments, but if, if they've already, uh, weighed in on and signed off on it, uh, I'm comfortable with the language, you, despite my lack of, of, uh, participation in social networks.
Yes, these items just, just generally, this is Sam Booth for the record, have been distributed to the county, uh, department heads for review. Uh, and each of the elements of, as we've been drafting them have, have gone to the county department heads for review. I haven't heard any comment about this action in particular.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Maureen, I would defer to you then for, uh, making a motion or modifying or, uh, uh, your, your preference on, uh, this one. Maureen, I think you might be still muted. There you go.
I can't, I can't support this. I just, I have issues with ringing doorbells. I have, um, there's too much information gathering going out there and the ability for it to be misused is very high. So I will not be supporting this.
Okay. Uh, there members of the planning commission that want to, uh, speak for or against or, uh, offer a motion for or against? Bryce?
I agree with, um, my colleagues here that this, uh, social media and social networks are a concern of mine as well. I think in this particular case, the intent is through, when it says through information sharing, I, I want to clarify that the intent here is that, let's say the sheriff's office needed to get a public announcement out and they wanted to do it through Facebook. They're going to get that information shared to the public through Facebook. I don't, I don't see this as the county gathering information and sharing it with the public. And so if, if the intent is just to utilize social media to get public safety information to the public, then I would support it.
Thank you, Bryce. Christie?
Can we add something to this that says, uh, cause I agree with Bryce that if it's just posting on Facebook or Nextdoor or something updates, um, that, but not actually gathering data and sharing data. Uh, so if there's some way to add something like that, then that way they can, we can put the information out there, but we aren't gathering their data and sharing data. Like we're not, we're not tracking where people physically are located and geolocating and we're not supporting that. We're not. So no location services, but really just information out to the public, but no information or data gathering.
Thank you, Christie. So maybe perhaps just adding some language at the end of that, uh, Sam Booth or, or Christie that, uh, would, uh, add, uh, say after through information sharing, but not gathering or sharing data, something to that effect. Um, Brian, you will, uh,
They're sharing public information because I understand we have public information officers and if those public information officers are being encouraged to use social media because they can't get through to people, I think that's a positive thing as Bryce says. Um, but if we're saying we're sharing public information, even that is scary too. Um, so I think that's a little too broad. Uh, maybe somebody can help there too. Um, import, I don't know. This, this one's tough.
Maureen, do you want to take a crack?
Sorry, when we had, you know, the fires in California, well, they're continuing. A lot of people were saying they put out public service announcements on the social medias and people didn't get them because they don't subscribe to social networks. And they had greater luck going through phone numbers, which most public agencies have. I don't, I just have a problem with this whole thing. So we don't know who's gathering information. They don't have to tell us if they're gathering or sharing. We can put whatever language we want in there, but it's just language because we have no authority over the agencies that run the social networks or the ones that are utilizing them.
Thank you, Christie. Sam, did you have a, a suggestion?
I have a suggestion, Mr. Chair, and, um, just hearing the discussion and, um, maybe the, the, uh, tough part we're having is trying to reword this. Um, to be honest, I think, uh, Maureen, what this is talking about is, is efforts that the communications team and the sheriff's office, um, are already doing today. Uh, you know, they have, the sheriff's department has their own Facebook page. The county has a Facebook or Twitter. Um, and the communications team is pushing information out through those. So I think what, you know, what this is talking about is just the importance of having that. Um, people, uh, add the Douglas County or Douglas County Sheriff's Department as a friend or join, you know, to follow, uh, their feed so that they can get information from the sheriff's department. So I think it's more of pushing information out through the, uh, through that social media platform than, than it is gathering. However, uh, I think I said this on some of the other elements. I mean, if we look at this as an action item within the master plan, um, I think, uh, as we're, we're looking at putting together the implementation plan today. And if I list this in the implementation plan, I think as soon as the master plan's approved, we would, we would note that this item was met, that, that they're doing this today. Um, so I, I don't know, you know, it could be more of a policy because it's something that's ongoing. Uh, you know, or maybe Douglas County should recognize the role of social networks. Uh, but as an action item, I, I think they're doing this today. Um, I, I don't believe they're, they're collecting data or anything like that, but in an effort to, you know, move the, the conversation along, I would, I think I would be willing to strike this action item. Um, I don't know if, if our director has any opinion on it. Um, but that again, as I said, this was one that was just, uh, proposed by the consultants, um, and this, this hasn't been in the master plan prior.
Thank you, Sam. That's a good suggestion. Uh, if we need to add anything back after consultation with, uh, public information officer or the sheriff's department, maybe we can add something back at the appropriate time, but, uh, I think that's a valid, uh, way to go about it. Brian?
So, um, I do understand how the sheriff's and them use it. What if we just recognize the strength and the role of such, social networks used for public safety? Um, and just cut it off right there. Stop talking about information sharing or lawful activities. I, I was even having trouble now with the increasing lawful activity. So I think if we cut it up there, we're just saying that we're recognizing that, you know, something used. And then we're strengthening the use of it in providing public safety, whatever that may be. You guys are the action people to figure that out. Um, I think that really says to what, you know, the sheriff's office is trying to achieve um, through the use of their social media network.
Thank you, Brian. Maureen, are you okay with that language? Or do you want to, uh, go ahead and, and offer to strike the entire, uh, section?
Well, I would, uh, approve, recognize and remove strengthen. But if that is not, uh, agreeable with the planning commission, I would move to strike.
I would move to strike it also. If that, the consultant added it, uh, the sheriff's department didn't bring this up or no, none of our public agencies. So we shouldn't, uh, take this as a action item based on the cost, the, uh, feelings of the consultant.
Thank you, Dave. Maureen, it's, uh, it's your call on making a motion. I think, uh, Brian has offered, uh, modified language to just, uh, includes the first part of that, but, uh, go ahead and make whatever motion you'd prefer to make and we'll deal with it.
I would move that we strike PS action six.
Is there a second?
Second.
David Cola seconds Maureen's, uh, motion. Uh, is there further discussion or debate? Brian?
So my further discussion would be is, I know we all hate social media and I might sound like a millennial being up here saying this right now. But the analyzation of data and where people are through social media has been proven in disasters to be beneficial for the community and their safety. Locating people throughout and the ability to just send extra information in a channel that might get the thirty or forty people that don't get the phone call, don't get the email. I think we're shutting ourselves off if we just say, hey, it's social networks and it's bad. I think it can be used for a lot of good, currently is being used for as much good as it is bad. And we're just throwing out the good side. And I think, uh, I'm not going to support removal of it. I'd prefer an amendment of it to make it more useful than removing it. Cause I think it is important and I think if we strengthen it, you know, all the younger people are going to use that more. So to say that we right now are going to cut off everybody in the future, I think that's, that's a grave mistake in planning forwards. So, um, I'm not in support of removal.
Thank you, Brian. I think you make some very good points. Um, I would have to, to say though, that if Sam Booth, uh, gives us the assurance that, uh, this is something that's already, uh, being done and, and moving forward, I, I think I'd have a comfort level of, of deleting the language at this point. And, uh, as I said before, if, uh, upon further review, we find that we need some, uh, some language to, uh, to support them, we can always, uh, uh, add that in there, but, uh, uh, I tend to occur with, uh, uh, concur with Maureen's, uh, suggestion at this point. Uh, other debate or, uh, comments on, uh, Maureen's motion to delete the, uh, action six language? Seeing none, uh, I'll, uh, call the roll. This is on, uh, deleting action, uh, six. Uh, Christie?
Hi.
Bryce?
Hi.
Uh, Dave?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Hi.
And the, uh, chair votes aye. So on this, there's, uh, six votes aye and, uh, one vote nay. So, uh, action six is, uh, removed. And then at this point, uh, we've concluded the, uh, the, uh, elements that we needed to do for the goals, policies and actions. And we will, uh, uh, next take up the executive summary. So I would call for a, uh, fifteen minute recess at this point. And we'll come back, uh, let's say at, uh, at, uh, uh, four fifteen and then we'll begin on the executor summary on, uh, page seventy-three. So with that, uh, we'll stand in recess, uh, till, uh, four fifteen. Planning Commission meeting back to order. It's four fifteen. And, uh, let me call the roll just to ascertain that we do, uh, still have a quorum. Uh, Christie? Uh, Christie?
President.
Okay, Bryce?
Here.
Uh, Dave?
Here.
Um, Mark?
Here.
Uh, Brian?
Here.
Maureen?
President.
And, uh, we have all seven members here, so, uh, we can continue on. Um, as I said, we're starting with page seventy-three, which is the executive summary. And this text goes through page ninety-four of the packet. And, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion first to accept the, uh, the draft that's, uh, included in the packet for the purposes of, uh, discussion and, uh, possible modifications. If that made, Maureen would make the motion to put the draft on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Brian seconds the motion. Uh, I'll call the roll. Uh, Christie?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Uh, Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have the draft in front of us. And what I'd like to do, as I said before, is, uh, uh, go ahead and entertain questions or comments or suggestions by any members of the Planning Commission at this point. Um, if you do have, uh, uh, modifications to the formatting, to corrections to spelling, uh, typos, other things, you can please submit those to the staff and they will make those corrections, uh, uh, before our next meeting. Uh, I think the data that's here is very useful. I think it's presented very well. I do have a couple of questions, uh, or comments of my own, but, uh, I'll defer to, uh, other members of the Planning Commission to, uh, to raise issues, uh, at this point.
I like it. I think it's well done. I handed my changes to Sam Booth. Mostly just grammatical and then I had something with the, uh, point eight employee, full-time employee that we have listed.
Thank you, Maureen.
On page four. There were five hundred and fifty-seven point eight zero full-time employees in Douglas County. And I thought we could round up.
Thank you. Um, other members of the Planning Commission want to jump in with, uh, general comments or, uh, questions? Uh, Brian, go ahead.
Well, I was looking on executive summary. I think it's, so it's packet page seventy-three. Um, just looking at our graphics, I mean, maybe, uh, I'm a little weird here, um, but we say housing units twenty-twenty, that's a total, you know, and accumulation has happened, we get to that, um, percentage increase. And then we have a couple ranges, but then when we go to high school graduation rate, we only say what happened this year. Uh, I think that's a poor representation of what, you know, would be Douglas County's average over, say, a five or ten-year period. Um, so, you know, I was thinking on a graphic like that. You know, the average is more of a predictor of next year than I think last year because you can have wide variations year to year. So I prefer to see more of an average there. And then in that same graphic, um, the hundred and fifty-four number of residential permits in twenty-nineteen. Um, the number one fifty-four, I mean, just again, it's, it sounds like it's low, it sounds great, but what, you know, what is that in reference to? Uh, you know, how many can we build? Maybe needs to be there or something like that. Um, I do have a few other recommendations elsewhere, but I'm still kind of, uh, you know, thinking on those. But those were the two ones immediately that I had, that I thought maybe to put up for discussion or maybe Sam and you guys can think of a way to maybe clean those up. And I think the graduation rate has to be an average. You know, somebody would look to a place to live and they just tell me how many graduated last year, I'd be like, great. But what if they graduated in forty percent the year before? Um, you know, something that this doesn't necessarily tell me. I know more research is always required. But if we put it here as an average, I think it tells a better story. Maybe not better, but a better story for us to be able to stand behind.
Thank you, Brian. Those are very good points. We do have, uh, Derek from Wood Rogers on the call. So, uh, Derek, uh, you can just make notes of what people's suggestions are. And, uh, perhaps, uh, we'll get some modifications when we, uh, deal with this second time around. Um, other members of the Planning Commission have thoughts or questions? If I can jump in, then, um, Derek, I think, uh, this is something that I've talked to Fred Steinman before about. But in a number of the tables, particularly table ES two, starting on packet page eighty-one, but going on the other ones. Uh, you've got information relating to Douglas County Census tract sixteen and seventeen. I think these are fairly small areas, uh, in, uh, in the Lake Tahoe area. I think one of them may be, uh, the Round Hill area and another one is the, uh, the area in maybe Skyland includes other population areas. I'm not sure how relevant those are. Uh, first of all, if, if they are, then they probably should be identified as the land that they encompass. So perhaps to simplify some of those tables, uh, we might take that language out. Um, and then, uh, the, the numbers would stand out a little bit more for Gardinerville, Mindon, State Line and the entire Douglas County. Because those I think are the, the key issues that we want to look at when we look at the population data. And then when we go over and look at, uh, housing data as well. Uh, the census tract, uh, ones I think just a little distracting. And then I would also, particularly when you get to page, uh, eighty-one on table ES two, you talk about the, uh, two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen percent change. So for Gardinerville, we have eight point four percent population growth. I think that's a good number, but I would suggest that you also add to this an a- average annual number as well. So we can really see, uh, obviously if it changes from two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen, eight point four. But what's, what, what are we averaging per year for growth over that time period? So I, I think, uh, uh, if you could put a, put a little line in there that would include that kind of data, that would, uh, give it a little bit more meaning. Again, I thought the, the layout was good and the information was good. And this is a good introduction to, uh, to some of the other things that we'll have, uh, in, uh, in, uh, other parts of the elements, uh, down the road. Are there, uh, other thoughts or, uh, questions on the executive summary? Okay, um, I do have one small addition that I would propose. And then again, um, as I said earlier, if members do have things that they want to add to these sections, um, we would entertain, uh, uh, motions on additional language. Uh, if they have sections that they would like to delete, uh, that they don't feel are necessary or they feel are, uh, are, uh, contradictory to, uh, what should be in the master plan. We can entertain, uh, uh, language in that regard. But, um, Sam, if you can put up the, what I was suggesting, uh, earlier with discussions with, uh, with, uh, you and with Sam Taylor. I think it's important in the executive summary that we have a small section on the situation with COVID nineteen that we've been dealing with, uh, both as a, uh, a reference to the circumstances that limited our public meetings. Um, as I've said before, I would have favored a lot more public meetings. Um, but that's just something that, uh, uh, we were handicapped by the situation we were in. Um, uh, so, uh, the language that I have, uh, that Sam Booth has before you and it now is, is, is really not meant to do anything more than explain the situation that, that, uh, we developed this master plan and to recognize that there may have been, there may have been activities that took place. There may have been things that, uh, uh, need to be considered, uh, in the future, uh, for amending the master plan. Um, I, again, uh, regret that we didn't have, uh, um, sessions in every different community to, to vet all of the language. We tried our best to, uh, to go to, to the towns and we go to the areas and to listen to the people's concerns. the areas, and to listen to the people's concerns. But I don't think we want to say that this master plan should not preclude good suggestions that come from people in the, in the future. So that's why I've offered this language, and I'd be happy to entertain questions or discussions of the proposed addition. Okay, seeing no questions or comments, Brian, go ahead.
So I was just sorry, I was having trouble reading in it small type. Supporting revisions before we know what the revisions are, I don't know that we want to support them. I think we should always consider the revisions as warranted, but not necessarily say today we support all revisions that any person can walk in with and, you know, you know, I don't know. But I think we should consider those revisions, or instead of just automatically say we're going to support those revisions.
I think that's a very valid point, and I would accept that as a modification. That was certainly my intent. You can't, you can't support something before you know what it is. Any other comments or questions on, on adding language? Tom?
Kirk, thank you. This is Tom DeLair for the record. Is this, is this paragraph, would this be more appropriate, like in a preface, maybe, on the, on the plan? Or do we want to include it in the executive summary?
I, I would be happy to put it in whatever place it, it fits most appropriately. We haven't seen the, the, or the layout or any of those documents, so I just offered it at this point in the, in the document, figuring it was the most logical place for now. But we can, we can, again, move language around for formatting purposes when we get to the final, final document.
Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts or questions, Brian?
I just like the suggestion to put it in the preface. I mean, this is really is the preface of where we were when we started this whole process. This year, granted, we did start last year before then, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll make that notation that, that is the most logical place when we get to that document. Other thoughts, questions, or discussion on this language? Well, I'll offer the motion then to include the language as presented on, on the screen for inclusion in the preface when we consider that language in the, at the next meeting. And I would entertain a second.
Brian, I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, then I'll call for a vote on the added language. Kristi?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So this vote is seven votes to none, and the language will be added. Are there other questions or proposed modifications on the executive summary? Okay, then we'll move forward to land use and historic preservation. And again, the process we'll follow is making a motion and then accepting the draft language that begins on page 95, and then we'll open it up for questions, comments, or possible modifications. Is there a motion to accept the draft language?
So moved.
Bryce moves to accept the draft language on the land use and historic preservation. Is there a second?
Second.
Kristi seconds the motion. Is there debate? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Kristi?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So on this, there's seven votes aye, no votes nay, and that language is now open for questions, comments, modifications, or discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sam Taylor, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was just wanting to clarify something. Sam Taylor, for the record, from Douglas County DAs. I was wondering whether or not you were going to hold a vote on each element, or you were going to do all the elements presented today, or a single motion for all taxed elements?
Thank you for, for interjecting there. I, yes, I intended to, to call for a vote on each of the elements individually after they were discussed, and I failed to do that on the executive summary. So having, having you correct me there is most appreciated. And let's go back then. And what we would be then doing is considering all of the, of the language in the executive summary, the tables, figures, for initial approval. If modifications were requested, as you did, Brian, and as I did, we will bring those back for final approval. But we would just be getting the approval of everyone on the language as we modified in the executive summary. So that'll just close that out as a action item. So if we could have a motion to approve the executive summary as amended, then we'll continue on with land use. Brian?
Well, I would only say, can't we just direct them to make the updates and then approve the final product? We'll have, having to say an approval here, because when I'm looking at my two updates, there's no update. It's just a comment box to fix something. So, you know, saying I approve, I, you know, I'm hesitant to say that without seeing in front of me what I'm approving next time. I'd rather kick it to them, they fix it, and then we approve it than do a dual approval and not have all these adjustments in front of us.
Yes, that's, that's a point well taken. I was going to have us do kind of a preliminary approval and then a final approval, so you'll get another bite at the apple on all of these. But unless you, unless you think it's necessary, Sam Taylor, we can just go ahead and follow that rule, is if we're, if we're fixing something, we'll wait to, to vote on an overall approval till we'll get the fixes and come back to us the second time.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor, again, for the record, that would work as well. I was just trying to follow what you had previously indicated your desires were.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll shift gears, and then we'll hold final approval till we see some final language and modifications. And thank you.
So can I move the staff correct the executive summary? Do we have to move that, or one second and vote? No, just?
No, I don't, yeah, I don't think if there are small observations or suggested modifications, we don't need to make a formal motion. Only for deleting, adding, or changing language of substance will we need a motion on individual items. So, okay, well, with that accomplished, we'll move forward on to questions, comments, modifications to the land use and historic preservation element. Anything people that would like to review or like to ask questions about?
Mr. Chair, I have a question on packet page 117 in the Gardner Ville Ranches Community Plan. It calls out the Gardner Ville, or the Community Center, and it calls it the Gardner Ville Community Center. And it's the Douglas County Community Center. And I think that's critical language. It's called, it's called out in the vision statement.
Yes, thank you, Maureen. You've noted the incorrect name there, and we'll get that fixed for the next, next version. Other questions, comments, observations, suggested changes? Again, I think the, the graphics are very well done here, and it's a very, very much improved document over the, the ones that we've had in the past.
I have a couple other little language changes. I submitted them to staff. I don't need to bring them up here, do I?
No, if you've submitted minor corrections or modifications, you don't need to raise them at this point.
It's just grammar.
Yes. Okay, if there's no questions or comments or suggested changes on the, on the land use and historic preservation, then I think we can move forward to agriculture and conservation. This is starting on packet page 157. And again, as, as I think I might have said before, when we bring these back for final approval, we will have the goals and the policies that have already been approved filled in. And then, correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, Sam Booth, what we're doing with the actions is those actions that we have already approved, either at our previous meetings in October or earlier today, we'll strip out those actions from the document and put those in the implementation element. So those actions will be a matrix in the implementation element, and that's where they will, they will, will be, be placed to, to again, have a kind of a clear and visionary portion of each of the elements, and then an action-oriented portion in the last element. And that element, since there's a lot of staff work that needs to be done since we've made changes, the implementation element will become before us on the 17th of November. So we will ask the staff to be working that over the, working on that over the course of the next two weeks for a presentation on the 17th. Questions or comments or modifications on the agriculture element? I had one question. I'm not sure whether we need to go back to some census data or agriculture data on page, packet page 163, the table A2, which is the Census of Agriculture for Douglas County. To me, the, the numbers in the, the first paragraph are a little bit incomplete, because you see down there, when we talk about the land in farms, the number of acres, and, and the, the line where it shows in 2002, there were 210,000 acres, and then we dropped in 2007 to 91, then we went back up. And it, I think the language in the, the first paragraph there needs to be modified and, and researched a little bit further. If it says, there appears to be an anomaly in the 2012 numbers, well, I think we ought to be able to figure out what the anomaly is. Somebody ought to be able to get an answer to that, because that just jumps out as to why there was obviously so much of an increase from, from 97 to 2002, and then a back a decrease to 2007. So perhaps that could be better explained. So my direction would be to just ask the staff to get a little more information on that and make that a little more explanatory. Any other questions, thoughts? Sam Booth, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just want, I just want to ask, this table was included in the draft, and we updated the data since, since the last update, and the only other census of agriculture was in the year 2017. So we added that to the table. They had kind of that same statement before. So I, we can do some research on, on that number. I think, you know, it's, it's possible that it was just a reporting error to the Department of Agriculture. And if that's the case, you know, is there an asterisk or some way that we just note that? But I don't know entirely how we determine that, other than, of course, you know, I wasn't here in 2002. But we can ask around and see if anyone knows if there was any, you know, any substantial reason for, for that increase in acreage. But I'm just worried if we aren't able to determine why that was reported that way, just, just how we should show that here.
I, yes, I think you're entirely free to do whatever you want. If you get the answer, put the answer. If you need to put an asterisk, put an asterisk. I just think that explanation is a little bit weak in the, in the language there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Sam Taylor.
Did you introduce a motion for the ag element to be put forth as for revision?
Um, I don't recall. I don't think I did. Your, your, your observation is correct. I think I might have skipped right over that one. So let, if I did, let's, let's redo it then, just for formality purposes. So can I have a motion to accept the language in the agriculture and conservation draft for purposes of a possible amendment or modification?
So moved.
Bryce moves to accept the agriculture land and conservation element for discussion and possible modification. Is there a second?
Brian, second.
Brian seconds. Thank you, that gentleman. If there's no discussion, we'll call for the vote. Kristi?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark? Mark, are you on mute, or Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So this is seven votes to zero to accept that for discussion. And I apologize for jumping too far forward. Other thoughts, questions, issues that we need to address on the agriculture and conservation element?
I have a couple of questions on page 193 of our packet. It leads off with the Community Wellhead Protection Plan. And from reading the public comments today, that is the document that Lynn Song sent to us, if I am not mistaken. And will that be included as a supplement, or how will that be included in our, in the Master Planner Incorporated, the information contained within?
Thank you, Maureen. Sam Booth or Tom DeLair, do you want to take a crack at answering Maureen's question? How are we going to include the Wellhead Protection Plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Sam Booth. We did see that public comment and appreciated those comments. And so I replied back that we did have that paragraph there and just called that paragraph out. And what I think we're going to do is we're just going to hyperlink where it says the Wellhead Protection Plan will be actively hyperlinked to the plan. It's already on the county's website today, but the intention of the plan also was to be included in the master plan. And so we're going to attach it just right there with the language.
Okay, thank you. Also, down below, where in the environmental review, same page, packet page 193, it says, it talks about Nevada not requiring any environmental review, but it is appropriate for the county to develop measurable environmental review criteria. Did we incorporate that into the ag conservation language, or is this something we still need to add to the master plan? Or that be a board policy?
I believe, Maureen, this is, this is Sam Booth. I believe we had either a policy or an action on there. And as we're moving on here, I can try to see if I can pull that up out of the, the Goals and Policies document we had. I'm not sure if, if we amended that policy or if we removed it. I believe there was discussion on it on one of the early days. Let me see what I can find here.
Yeah, I'd hate to have the language on page 37 in the ag element if we don't have policies or actions to back it up.
Understood.
Oh, you're looking for that, Sam. I can address the larger question, Maureen, is as you are going through items like the language here, if you do have additional policies or actions, hopefully not too many, but we will still have an opportunity to entertain those on our meeting. But we will still have an opportunity to entertain those on our meeting on the, on the 10th. Uh, so if we've missed something, let's pick them up and correct them. Uh, if we have public comments that come in, uh, such as the public comments that we had come in today that suggest new, uh, policies or new actions. I think those are worthy of consideration at our November 10th meeting. Uh, we want this to be a deliberative process and an ongoing process. So we're not going to close anything out at any point. Until we get to the final, uh, the final approval of the final document. So that's a very good observation. If we need to pick something up, we'll quick pick it up.
Okay, Sam, you know what I'm looking for. So if you don't have the time to do it right now.
We have, um, Maureen, this is Sam Booth. We have a policy talking about protecting environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Um, we have, you know, they're a little more general than maybe the languages here. Um, I don't see a specific action item about developing an environmental review. You know, procedures or, or those type of things. Uh, you know, of course we have actions about protecting wetlands. Um, and, uh, we had some of the language about habitat. Uh, let's see what else. Uh, noise standards, um, and, uh, activities like that, but it doesn't, let's see. Uh, so I think there's an action for working with NDP in the Carson sub conservancy district. Um, to remove, well, that's more strictly to, uh, removing a river segment from the EPA list. So they're, they're on, in general, on, on different topics, I suppose.
Okay, I'll write some language and I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Maureen. Other, uh, comments, questions, suggestions, proposals for the agriculture and conservation element? Derek, your crew is getting an A plus so far, I guess. If there's nothing else. We appreciate your good work. If there's nothing else on agriculture and conservation, then we'll move to public facilities, services and recreation. And we'll go ahead and this starts on packet page 194. And concludes with packet page 255. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to accept the draft language for the purposes of a discussion or further modification. Is there a motion to accept that draft language?
So moved.
Bryce, uh, moves to accept the proposed language. Is there a second? The chair will second the motion to accept the draft language. I'll, uh, ask for any debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the roll. Uh, Christie?
Aye.
Bryce?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So there's seven votes aye, no votes nay. So we will now consider public facilities, services and recreation for questions, uh, comments, modifications to, um, or other observations. I had the one area which perhaps staff can go back to the appropriate, uh, appropriate parties and ask for a little more information on packet page 235. Uh, where the table PF 13 registered library uses, users is there and then the explanatory language behind that. I'm a big supporter of the library. Uh, I think we need to do a lot more things, uh, as far as library services. I think, uh, innovation is going to be really key in the future when it comes to the library. But I'm a little concerned with the language, um, uh, starting in the second paragraph, which says to resolve existing deficiencies in future growth, the library needs to expand. When you look at the numbers, the total number of registered library users is down. Uh, the percentage of population using the library is down. I, like you said, I, I support the library a hundred percent. But I'm wondering if that language should be modified to make suggestions of, of, uh, areas where we could, uh, provide services that are necessary or, uh, uh, something that's new that would bring in more users to the library. Rather than just saying, uh, we, we, we anticipate future growth and the library needs to expand. I think that's too simplistic and I think that doesn't address the situation that we might be in, in the future with declining number of users, um, and, and a different scenario coming forward. So that would be my only suggestion to the staff to explore that with the, uh, with the appropriate officials and see if we can come up with something that points us to the future uh, in a, in a positive way. Other comments, uh, or questions on the public facility services and recreation section? Sam Taylor?
Mr. Chair, um, are you, the, the proposal, Sam Taylor again from Douglas County DA's. It seems like the, the proposed modification you're making in the second paragraph there on page 235 potentially is policy related and substantive in nature. Um, is, are you intending to have this language introduced and then voted on at the next meeting?
What my preference would be is for the, the staff to examine the question. And if they need to provide some more supporting or, or explanatory information to modify that language. And then, uh, I don't know that we need to take a separate vote now or at the next meeting. Uh, if the language is satisfactory. If, if there's not any further data that, uh, supports the, the, the language in paragraph two, then I guess at the next meeting I'd propose to modify that. Uh, because I don't know that we can say that the master plan should tell the library they need to expand. I support the lang, I support the library, but, uh, do we need to expand the library? If there's a lot fewer users or do, do we need to expand library services? Do we need to increase the book mobile or do we need to have a, uh, a neat innovative pro, program to provide the services rather than just saying expand the library? So I would, I would leave that to the staff to, uh, to refine and come up with something that, uh, that, uh, if we can review it again, then we'll, uh, we'll act on it at the next, the next meeting. Uh, Tom, did you have your hand up for a comment?
Uh, yeah, did Sam, did you want to go or do you want to?
Nope, I was getting his attention for you.
The last sentence of that paragraph, uh, says the five-year capital improvement plan identifies an expansion for the Minden Library of approximately 2,500 square feet. So I think that's the expansion that, that is referred to in the, in the first statement. But there is, I mean, we weren't able to get information from the, from the library on the book mobile. And, and, and what exactly it's doing. It's actually shut down right now because of COVID, I believe. And so, uh, it's not in operation, um, at least per their website. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Tom. That's very helpful. Uh, Sam Booth, did you have other, uh, other information?
No, I, I was going to point out the same thing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there other comments, suggestions or thoughts on, uh, public facilities, services and recreation? Okay, seeing none, then I think we've finished with the, the elements that we needed to review today. And, um, we can, um, move forward to a closing public comment if there's, uh, no other, uh, no other business.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, this is Sam Booth.
Yes, Sam.
Um, just before we close the meeting out, um, I just wanted to see if I could briefly describe the next, uh, the next two meetings we have scheduled, uh, just for the benefit of the commission, uh, and the public.
Yes, please do.
Okay, so, um, as, as the commissioners and, and any members of the public watching just saw, uh, what we're doing now that we've moved past the goals and policies, just reviewing the draft elements of the plan. Um, as, as Chairman Walder said, that do not contain those, those goals and policies. Um, what will be presented at our next meeting on November 10th will be the growth management and housing elements. Uh, the public safety element and the economic development element. Uh, and we'll do the same thing that we reviewed, uh, uh, right here this afternoon. Uh, so I suppose if, if we move at the same pace, that could be a, a fairly quick meeting on November 10th. Um, what we're scheduling for November 17th is to discuss the implementation element. Um, and the reason that element is on the 17th is because, uh, we needed to have the approved goals, policies and actions uh, finished so that we could include those actions into the implementation plan. Um, and so we'll present that, uh, element for review on November 17th. Um, we would, uh, plan to review any final edits, um, uh, and, and discuss the changes made that have been requested uh, on each of the elements that we just went through, uh, and the elements that we go through on November 10th. Um, and then as the chairman indicated as well, you may have an opportunity uh, as all of the elements are presented basically in their final form with the policies and goals incorporated at that point into the elements, uh, to discuss if there's, uh, minor tweaks or additions that the, the planning commission, uh, would like to make to, uh, goals, policies or actions or other text or items, uh, at that time. And so we're hoping on November 17th, uh, for the, that final draft, everything basically put back together uh, for the commission's approval.
Thank you, Sam. That was a very good explanation. I would also note for the members in the public, we will have no regularly scheduled business on, uh, November 10th. Uh, so it'll only be a master plan, uh, meeting and discussion. Do people have questions of, uh, of Sam or, uh, uh, thoughts that they want to express now before, uh, before we move to a closing public comment? Great. Well, I want to thank everybody for their good cooperation and assistance today. We moved very efficiently. Uh, but we gave everything a good consideration. And I do appreciate the good efforts of all of the, uh, planning commission members and all the staff. So, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, I will move to a closing comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the planning commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line. The voice messages will be played to the public and planning commission in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played to the planning commission and public. Uh, Colleen, do you have a public comment that's been recorded?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So far I have three.
Okay, it's, uh, 4:58 is when we're starting. So go ahead.
If I could real quick, I'd like to remind anybody that's making written comment to please send it to our group email, I, I received a couple that were sent directly to me and that might cause it an issue of I'm not in the office. So I would just like to remind anybody making comment to send it to our group email.
Thank you, Colleen.
Here's the first comment.
Jay Duda, D U D A. I've been listening to, uh, the meeting today and have a comment regarding goal four. Um, I know that it was amended today and sensitive was added to the habitat. And I would like to offer, um, something in regards to the Martin Slough Nature Trail area. And I'm asking the county to recognize this area and especially the Wild Bird Sanctuary Pond as a sensitive habitat for wildlife. As I commented last week, uh, this pond has, um, a great number of wildlife birds who are, um, who overnight there. There are hundreds of Canada geese overnighting this time of year, every night. In addition to the, um, Canada geese, we have red-tailed hawks, swallows, ravens, cooper hawks, morning ducks, quail, finches, magpies, and the list goes on and on. So this area has actually evolved um, greatly from the time, uh, three years ago. Uh, so it is actually a sanctuary. Nature has made it a sanctuary for wild bird life. And so I'm just asking for the county to recognize the pond and the Martin Slough Trail, Nature Trail area as sensitive habitat. Thank you.
Comment number two.
Ellie Waller, W A L L E R. Courtney Walker and her team have successfully completed phase one and Alpine View has failed to reduce floodwaters in the neighborhood. Has anybody queried Courtney and her team for their input on the master plan recently? If not, staff should be updating her and having a discussion. We should be adding an action item and policy for vacation home rental enforcement in this master plan to be proactive with the forthcoming policies that may be generated, but it's time to take action now. Uh, is there an estimate how long it will be between master plan update and development code implementation that puts cheap into the plan? Next, um, on my comment here are three definitions. Action definition, the factor process of doing something typically to achieve an aim. A thing done, the accomplishment of a thing usually over a period of time in stages or with the possibility of repetition. Implementation, the process of putting a decision or plan into effect. Execution, the realization of an application or execution of a plan, ideal model, design, standard, algorithm or policy. Next and last, accountability is the obligation to explain, justify and take responsibility for one's actions. Accountability is the state of being accountable, meaning responsible for something or obligated to answer to someone such as a person with more authority or others. These are clear directions should the implementation plan beginning in 2011 to date isn't status for accountability.
Comment number three.
Chip Slate. Given the majority of planning commissioners, you know who you are. We took the task of reviewing and updating the master plan seriously. We did their homework. Gave the issues thoughtful consideration, weighed in on a variety of topics. While I did always agree with your viewpoints, I appreciated your concerted efforts. Actually, this entire proposed 2020 master plan update has been a travesty. And a 25-year update next year may well undo all of your work. It's a travesty because this is still supposed to be the 2016 update, which is now four years late. It is being rushed through by community development and certain county commissioners before a, a new board is seated next year. It is trying to be ran through despite an unacceptable failure to solicit adequate pub, public input as has been done in all past updates. The individual communities have not even had a reasonable opportunity to weigh in on their own community plans. Instead, instead of rushing this through this year, the master plan update should begin next year, the 25-year update. It is a travesty because there's been no reference or deference to the existing master plan that's updated in 2011. When the planning commission votes to adopt the draft 2020 update, that does not make it the master plan. All you've been doing is updating a draft, not the actual master plan. By never presenting the current master plan, community development has made a mockery of this update. It is a travesty because this is not a document that has been adopted by the public or sufficiently related to that master plan. Nor does it adequately reflect the public interest. And should, instead, it should be referred to as the community development master plan. And they have had the primary influence on this radical departure from the update process. The update should be to the existing master plan. It is a travesty because the format is so inappropriate. Combining chapters does not make the plan shorter or simpler. It makes it more confusing. The chapters should be separated to the way they used to be. In conclusion, this last minute attempt to update our master plan is flawed in so many ways that it should be set aside. And the 25-year update begun next year, that update should solicit far more public input, including every community so that they can weigh in on their own community. including every community, so that they can weigh in on their own community plan. All meetings should be in-person to allow public comment as on each element has always been the case in the past. The 25-year update should be based on the current 2011 master plan, while considering the 2016 draft update. This Community Development Master Plan should be rejected.
That was the last one so far.
Thank you, Colleen. I have 5:05 PM now. We started public comment at 4:58. So unless there's anything else from members of the Planning Commission, I will close public comment. And we will consider the meeting adjourned until November 10th at 1 PM. So thank you very much.